So, let's go find the agenda.
All right.
And we're live.
We're live and we're recording.
Kenmore City Council is now in session. Clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Curtis.
Present.
Councilmember Marshall.
Present.
Mayor Baker.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Herbig.
Here.
Councilmember O'Kane.
Here.
Councilmember File.
Here.
Councilmember Shrubnik.
Here.
So, we do have a flag in Rob's office. So, if you will please join me in the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. If there are no objections, the agenda will stand approved as written. Next item on the agenda is a presentation. It's a recognition of Fire Marshal Jeff LaFame's years of service to the city. And he has, and he has been awesome. Mr. Hampson, please.
Hey, good evening, Mayor and councilmembers.
Brian, Jeff should be on here in just a moment. I hope, Jeff, are you there?
Looks like he's muted and he's got his picture turned off.
Okay, good. I think he can. Jeff, you're muted, but can you? Okay, great.
You guys ready?
We are ready.
All right, well, hey, thank you for this opportunity and really looking forward to it. And I'm really sad to be giving this presentation. Really been wonderful working with Jeff. And you may not know this already, but he is actually retired already. So, this is a little belated retirement send-off for him. So, it's too late to try to convince him otherwise, unfortunately. But, you know, the community and the city and all of our coworkers are really going to miss him. You know, we've been blessed to have him as a member of our team for, since 2006. He's been the Fire Marshal for the city of Kenmore. And I started in 2010. I had the wonderful opportunity to work for, work with him over the last 10 years. You know, he has over three decades of experience in the fire prevention field. And it's really that kind of knowledge that has given him the wisdom and the ability to really be really helpful to the customers, the citizens, and everything. And so, we really emphasize how much we've appreciated Jeff's input and collaboration over the years. As you all know, Jeff was a major part of our downtown redevelopment. And a lot of the issues that came up, you know, Jeff was right there helping us work through them. And so, I can't really say enough, Jeff, but thank you so much for all of those times. Let's see, so in 2008, Jeff became a board member of the Washington State Association of Fire Marshals. And in 2011, he was elected Fire Marshal of the Year by the Fire Marshals Association. And he is an active, active bit for fire sprinklers, as you all know. He helped assist the city with the passage of the fire sprinkler ordinance in the city of Kenmore. And he has served as a Chair of the Washington Fire Association Coalition for four years now. Over the years, he's not just been a great coworker to work with, but for me, he's actually become a really great friend. So, he's definitely going to be missing our community and throughout the city hall. So, thank you so much, Jeff.
Well, thanks, Brian. Thanks for the kind words. Everyone has been so great to work with. I've been lucky enough to have found a great team there in Kenmore. And a group of people who kind of shared my ideas about how to make these projects successful, which is always challenging because there's a lot of competing interests and things like that that are all, you know, trying to get things done in certain ways. But I think that we were pretty successful overall, and I hope that I was a contributing member of the team.
Oh, my goodness. You were definitely an asset to the team. Your leadership with the Fire Department and the inspections and that has meant such a tremendous opportunity for the cities. And we really, really appreciate your being in that position and you're doing the wonderful job on inspections that you've done over the years. You're truly going to be missed.
Thank you, Mayor.
May I add something? May I add something?
Please do.
One thing I really appreciate is you being part of the meetings where they were the pre-planning meetings. So, instead of waiting for problems to come up, you were part of that, hey, let's figure out how we can get this all right the first time. I appreciated that so much.
Absolutely. And it is really critical to get started from the very beginning on those projects.
So, thank you, thank you, Jeff. Brian, is there anything else we need to do?
Nope, that's it. Thank you, Jeff, for all your years and enjoy retirement.
Thanks so much.
Thanks, Jeff.
Love working with all of you.
Yeah, thank you, Jeff. Have a good one.
Great evening.
Thank you.
You bet. All right, bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
All right. Next item on the agenda is the Forterra Repairian Restoration Program on Samamish River. Mr. Sawyer, please.
Yes, give me just a moment to bring Richard.
We started that a long time ago when we had a meeting of all the cities together involved, and this is what it's grown into. So, this is great.
All right, they should be joining here in just a moment with Eli from Forterra. Zoom is a little slower tonight, I apologize. Oh.
Okay, no action is needed from us on this. It's information only, and so I'm looking forward to it.
Apologize, Mayor, hold on here.
Oh, no, that's fine, Kelly, you're doing great.
Promoted Richard, he said he got booted, unfortunately. Is Eli with us?
I am, yes, I'm here.
Oh, great, okay. Richard? Can you hear me?
Richard Sawyer, are you there?
Hopefully, Richard will rejoin us. He did say he got booted off. Let me give him a message to log back in. Is he there?
Sorry about that, can you hear me, Kelly?
Yeah, sorry about that, Richard.
Did you boot me off instead of adding me?
I certainly didn't intend to do that, no, I thought I did add you.
Kelly would never do that.
Council, can you hear Richard? Yeah.
We can.
Okay, great.
Okay, great. Apologize for that. So, yes, so a couple of months ago, myself and a couple of other staff sat in on a presentation provided by Forterra about some of the great restoration work they've done in the region. And to get an update on a recent grant that they were awarded from King County's Waterworks Grant Program to apply the model that they've been using down the Cedar River watershed, up here on the Samamish River watershed. So, I've asked Eli Tome, who's the Director of Riparian Restoration with Forterra, to come and provide kind of an abbreviated version of that presentation to council so that you can get updated on some of the work that they've done and also on this grant that they recently have been awarded and what they have planned for Samamish River. So, Eli, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Eli's with us. Council, I just want to let you know this presentation's also been added to the packet today. So, if you want to look at that, I think Eli's going to also share his screen.
Yes.
I've allowed you to share your screen, Eli, so hopefully you can do that now.
It should be shared, can y'all see it?
Not yet.
Not yet. Oh, there we go.
There we go. Now, we got, okay, Forterra, right.
Counselors. Okay.
Um, so again, my name is Eli Tome, and I'm here with Forterra. And Forterra is a local environmental nonprofit, and we focus on supporting land for everyone. Our organization developed from a traditional land trust. We were once known as Cascade Land Conservancy. And we still do more traditional land trust activities, but we've really expanded over the last decade to work on issues including urban land, farmland, and issues like affordable housing and sustainability. So, we work to secure places, urban and wild, that are keystone, sustainable future for all. That's our tagline. Our marketing program is good at creating those sort of things. And this basically means that we work to secure open space for beauty. We want to make sure that we're inclusive and that we're providing that land for people of every background and opportunity. And we look at creating healthy air, healthy water, and places to grow healthy food. So, I'm here representing our Riparian Restoration Department. And I don't have, I just started working for Forterra in April. So, I moved to Seattle during the pandemic and haven't gotten to see very much of our land. So, I unfortunately don't have any photos of the Samamish River for you today, but I hope that you've all, I'm sure you've all been to it. So, our program on the Samamish River is built off of our work on the cedar. And that started about 10 years ago. And what we're really focused on in the Cedar River is the control of knotweed, which is an invasive species that grows in riparian areas. Riparian areas are the lands directly adjacent to rivers. And the reason that that's a problem is that it occupies the space that native plants normally would be and along rivers that have healthy native plant communities. That helps slow down stormwater, it helps filter pollutants. So, it helps shade our rivers, which keeps the temperature down for salmon and for other aquatic species. And it helps the river act as a river should and have the natural geomorphic processes that enable there to be good salmon habitat and good water quality. And so, we've been working on the Cedar River to control this very pervasive invasive weed for over 10 years now. And the space that we occupy in the Cedar River is, there is a lot of work going on with different organizations, nonprofits, and government agencies. And there was really a need for there to be someone that was coordinating on private lands across the entire river. And that was tricky because there's about 350 different landowners along the river. So, we first got some grant money from a local salmon enhancement group to do a lot of outreach. And so, we sent mailings to any river address in the area. And then, kind of slowly over time, started working with key landowners along the river to control knotweed. And over the last 10 years, we have about 95% control of knotweed along the river. And we started really pivoting that program toward a revegetation program. So, with grant money, we work with private landowners and we control the knotweed for a couple of years until it is kind of at bay. And then, we'll plant native plants along their section of river. And that's having water quality benefits and stormwater retention benefits and helps with salmon habitat and shading and all that sort of stuff. So, that was kind of the Cedar River. And that was the first program that, in the first river that we started working on. And we've really been expanding that work over time. And I think about a year or two ago, we started seeing a need on the Samamish River for some help coordinating all the folks that live along that river. So, in the Samamish, as you might be aware, there's aquatic invasive weed issues that you have. There's reed canary grass, which is a non-native grass that is very pervasive along rivers. And there's blackberry, there's knotweed. And then, there's a big need for more shade along the river. It's pretty open, which causes temperature problems. So.
Doesn't the shallowness of the river also cause problems with temperature?
It can, yes. And especially if it's shallow and sunny, because that's the perfect recipe for there to be a heat problem on the river. Yes. So, our grant with King County Waterworks is to help coordinate all of the different cities along the river and different key partners from tribes and government agencies to help coordinate folks along the river to get a plan in order to deal with some of these aquatic invasive weeds and then riparian weeds, such as the canary grass, blackberry, and knotweed. And some of the very particular challenges that y'all have along the Samamish that I'm sure you're familiar with are permitting. Permitting is really tricky on the Samamish. It is classified as a water conveyance channel from the Army Corps of Engineers. And as you, as I'm sure you know, it controls the lake level. And so, we have to make sure that we can convey water through the river at a rate that does not raise the lake level and cause flooding issues along the lake. And so, as you add vegetation to the channel, that can slow down the water. And so, there's sometimes a permitting issue of if we're going to add trees and vegetation to the riparian area, does that then slow down conveyance of the river? So, we want to kind of come in and help with a plan and a streamlined permitting process to help understand what riparian restoration can have an effect on that water conveyance and making sure that we're not causing flooding issues and that we're maybe even decreasing flooding issues by increasing that floodplain's storage and key locations that can be restored and having a native plant community that is allowing the water to be passed through better than invasive choked section of river. So, our project again was allocated by King County Waterworks. And we are going to be convening stakeholders all across the river, identifying permitting barriers with the Army Corps and with the state and county. And we want to create a strategic action plan that will help identify key areas where we want to work on restoring native plant communities, controlling invasive plants, and establishing that robust riparian habitat that fish and the river really need. And we also want to do this work while making sure that we're not having disproportionate impacts on different communities along the river. For Terra, we're committed to being an anti-racist organization. We want to make sure that we're working with our BIPOC community and incorporating diverse voices into our restoration work as well. Our timeline for this project, this summer, we were just awarded the grant agreement. So, this summer, we're really just going to be reaching out to stakeholders, folks like the city of Kenmore and other cities along the river, and working out with tribes and with our county agencies and state agencies and the federal agencies. And by the late summer and fall, we're going to be identifying who in that group is really going to be the main folks implementing restoration projects, whether that's Forterra or its city governments or other nonprofit agencies. And we're going to work with those key implementer groups to start developing a strategic plan and then formalizing some partnership agreement so that we know how we're all working together and communicating and so that we have a really implementable plan when it comes to the end of it. And we have a streamlined permitting process that makes it easier to restore the Samamish River. So, I wanted to make sure I had enough time for questions. I think I only have about two minutes left. So, I would love if folks had any questions about our project.
I have a question.
Yes.
So, how did the knotweed get to this area and when did it arrive?
Great question. So, knotweed, it's Japanese knotweed, came over, it was an ornamental plant. It's a great privacy hedge. And so, it's been pretty established in our watershed for a very long time. I'm not sure exactly on the exact date that it came over, but it was planted originally as an ornamental and privacy hedge.
Then the second question, how do you kill it? Do you use chemicals?
The best way is to use chemicals. So, we use aquatic-approved herbicide, and we use very little of it. It's mixed at a 0.75% concentration. And for the Cedar River, for example, last year, we applied herbicide over 450 acres. And we only used two gallons of herbicide on that entire 450 acres.
Do you have to keep reapplying it to kill knotweed?
It gets it pretty good in one, one application for the knotweed. However, we do have to come back a few years in a row in order to completely control it. Thank you. Yes.
Any other questions? Anybody else? Karyna? Councilmember File, then Councilmember Shrubnik.
Mayor Baker. Yes, I have a question about methods, biological methods to help with cleaning of the water for a healthier fish environment. Do you incorporate biological methods?
Biolo, for control of knotweed, is that what you're asking? Or?
For, for a cleaner water habitat for salmon, for example.
Absolutely, yes. So, that's the, the main point of this project is to reestablish that native plant community. And so, the native plants that are adapted to our local environment are really good at filtering pollutants, slowing down water, and allowing more groundwater infiltration and aquifer recharge and all that sort of thing. So, the whole goal of it is to establish that native plant community to help filter out pollutants and store water into the, higher up into the watershed.
Thank you.
Councilmember Shrubnik.
Yeah, so, at the point of implementation, let's say maybe you have two partners, Snow King Watershed and some other entity that are going to be implementing. Do you, do you have funds for them to do the implementation? Or is it kind of, or are you, or just there to bring the partners together? Or I'm not sure what you have funds to do?
Great question, yeah. So, our funds right now are just to convene and create that plan and get everybody on board, create the streamlined permitting process. That's kind of the, the big holdup right now to be able to coordinate across jurisdictions and get those projects permitted. Once we have that plan, in order to action any restoration project implementation, we would need to seek additional grant funds. And we'd be, we do that now on a lot of different rivers and have access to different funding streams and granting agencies that we'd be applying to.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Marshall, did I see your hand go up? No. Councilmember O'Kane. Deputy Mayor. Okay.
Mayor Rob, oh, I'm sorry, I just want to make sure you saw him.
Yep, City Manager.
Yeah, so the Cedar River, to do all the work that you've done on it so far from inception till now, how long has that taken?
We've, we've been working in the Cedar River for 10 years.
Yeah, so can we expect a similar timeline for the Samamish?
Yes, yeah. It takes, it takes a while to be able to get all landowners on board, especially, especially with so many folks owning land adjacent to the river. Once we start working, you know, folks see their neighbor's land kind of go from this knotweed or blackberry-dominated system, and they're like, oh, who are you working with? And so, it's a lot of, you know, word of mouth and getting one landowner at a time. And so, the first couple of years, it'll be pretty slow. But if it's anything like the Cedar River, it really starts to take off after that year three or four, when there's more visibility on the ground and there's more projects kind of being implemented.
All right, now, Councilmember Marshall.
Yeah, another question, Mr. Tome. Do any of the herbicides have any components of whatever the scientific equivalent of Roundup is? And then, is there public review and/or publication of what herbicides are going to be used before the herbicides are applied and maybe how long of that review?
Yeah, so we typically use an herbicide called Aquanet. And that's an aquatic-approved herbicide. When it touches soil particles, it deactivates the chemical that causes the plants to die in it. So, it's a very widely-used herbicide, and it's approved by the USDA to use in aquatic environments.
You have public, do you have public review before you'd be applying these about what would be the timeline before you settle on, before an application of like, say, the first pesticide?
That's a great question. So, the public review, we probably had, that's one of the things we should work on throughout this project is seeing what's going to be required from the different jurisdictions to get the permits and to go through all that. So, and things are different depending on where you're applying them and different jurisdictions and who's in charge, and we have to go through all those processes. So, that's exactly why we're here and why we got this grant from King County.
I had one extra question that I'd like to add.
Councilmember File.
You said use Aquanet, and Aquanet is the same as Rodeo, which is the aquatic version of Roundup. Right?
Yeah, yeah, it uses glyphosate.
And are there methods to move away from the use of glyphosate that are equally effective? Or does it just take a little bit longer using a different application, other than glyphosate?
There are other herbicides that we use. The reason why we prefer Aquanet is some of those other herbicides. One of the other main ones that folks will use is Triclopiere. And that one has issues with spray or it can evaporate and it can drift and it can affect other plants. And so, we'd really like to use that, the aquatic-approved glyphosate one because it does not have as many issues with that. But there are different chemical options. And again, we use a very low concentration. It's, when we apply the herbicide, it looks a little jarring because you put blue dye in it. So, you know, all the plants are blue. But it's really just to be able to identify that herbicide was sprayed there. But it's a very low concentration. It's mostly surfactant that's used to bind to the outside of the weed. And yeah, it's the 0.75%. We use two gallons over 450 acres. It's, it's not very much herbicide. And the, the other methods that you could use, you could dig out knotweed. That creates a lot of different soil disturbance issues. And then, you have to use heavy equipment to get in. And you don't necessarily want to do a lot of soil disturbance right next to a river. It's also really hard to get the entire root mass. If you Google knotweed roots, take a look at those suckers, and they can pop up out of pavement, too. There's good pictures online, too, of the knotweed coming right up through pavement. So, really, the, the chemical option is the one that works the best and is most reliable. There is a approved, or there's a biological control agent. There's a weevil that they're looking at approving that can help bring it back. But that's not quite done with its permitting and review yet. So, it's not something that we're using, but that could be a future alternative that we look at as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Eli, we really appreciate this presentation. And I'm so happy that Forterra has, has partnered and is agreeing to take some of this on. That's really good news.
Thank you, thank you, I really appreciate.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, the Samamish is very important to us in Bothell and Woodinville and Redmond. So, we really appreciate your involvement. Thank you.
Thanks.
Great, thanks for your time, thanks, Eli.
All right. Next item on the agenda is the citizen comments. And this is an opportunity for you to express your opinions on issues that are important to you and the community. And anyway, I do have one, and I will start it off. This is from David Francis, the Public Art Coordinator in the city of Shoreline. And he says, "The public art by Jennifer Dixon is at three waterfront parks in Kenmore arrives at a time when we need public spaces more than ever to gather as a community and meet people we might not otherwise have the opportunity to interact with. As an improvement within that space, in addition to functional hardscape or plague equipment or trails, public art is uniquely capable of bringing people together, and we see that potential fully realized in Kenmore." Public art encompasses a wide range of disciplines. And it is best includes reference to history, environment, science, art, and culture. We see these many elements combing or combining in Dixon's new art for the city. From the former lodging, logging industry, the Lungbloom Park, and Dixon's Flume sculpture, to the way finding snags with poetic text at Rhododendron Park. That leads to people to the water's edge, to the boardwalks that accumulate in a series of artistic bird blinds at Esquire's Landing. While interpretive signage will accompany these artworks, many of the visitors will only slowly realize the depth and significance that the artwork conveys. Over the course of many repeated visits, residents will experience a slow the slow unraveling of a kind of secret, one that utilized cultural achievement with the environment and one that only public art can really deliver. The sense of place that comes to define our closely-held conception of home is created not just through our own personal activities, but through a shared sense of how neighbors, residents, and strangers all contribute to a holistic sense of the city as a forum. Dixon's artworks do not present a monolithic sense of a single meaning, but rather offer fertile grounds for the imagination to explore an unlimited range of meanings that are likely to evolve over time. Dixon's artwork with the Ad-Hoc Committee serves as an exemplary model for future projects. The artist came to the panel with ideas in draft form that were not fully polished as she listened to perspectives and suggestions, sorting from among the various requirements of budget, design, impact, safety, maintenance, and aesthetic experience, to emerge on a final conception that the committee greatly admired. The new artworks will help Kenmore contribute, continue to develop a sense of its own unique culture and chart a path forward in a young century only beginning to grapple with the challenges of the future. Thank you to Maureen Colasizzi for the opportunity and to other members of the community for such strong engagement. And to the artist Jennifer Dixon for listening and responding to such wide-ranging imagination. And that's from David Francis, Public Art Coordinator at the City of Shoreline. Do we have anybody else?
Thank you, Mayor. We do have a few people raising their hands. So I'm going to go ahead and take the first person. So if you do want to speak to the council tonight, you do need to raise your hand in Zoom, and I will bring you into the meeting. So our first person will be Vicky Grayland. And she'll be joining us here in just a moment. Vicky, can you hear us?
I just unmuted myself. Can you hear me?
Yes, can the council hear Vicky? Okay, great. Your three minute starts now, Vicky.
I'm Vicky Grayland, and I live in Kenmore. I hope you and yours are healthy and safe. And thank you for your leadership at this difficult time. Congratulations to all of our Kenmore neighbors covered by DACA. I applaud the recent Supreme Court decision on DACA. I want to make a few comments on the environmental proposals before the council tonight. I appreciate all the work being done and being proposed. First, I applaud the council for signing the King County City's Climate Collaboration Letter of Joint Commitment. I would like to point out that the letter does not really cover something that is one of Kenmore's strengths, something that Kenmore can uniquely contribute to fighting climate change, and that is preserving wetlands. Wetlands are really good at carbon sequestration. I think that wetland preservation nicely dovetails with the other proposals, the Salmon Safe Certification and the Forterra Riparian Restoration Program for the Sammamish River. In fact, wetland preservation is listed at the end of the Tukwila Example Plan from Forterra. Second, after going over the Climate Action Plan documentation, I applaud the city for moving forward with this. There are two budgets presented, a high end and a low end. As I see it, the difference is that the high-end budget covers hiring a consulting firm to produce the Climate Action Plan. And the low-end budget depends on community engagement, and I presume the King County K-4C Climate Action Plan. The high-end budget estimate is about half a million dollars through 2026, and the low-end budget estimate is almost $300,000 through 2026. I recommend that the council consider these options carefully. As a member of the K-4C, Kenmore has a low-cost access to the county Climate Action Plan. Kenmore also has access to all the information collected by People for Climate Action for free. Many volunteer hours by very concerned and educated citizens have gone into this collection of information, and I urge the city to use it. Finally, I'd like to talk about the Tree City USA membership. In my neighborhood near Wallace Swamp Creek Park, we lost a lot of trees in the park a few years ago because of windstorm that blew down trees that had been weakened by a drought the previous year. Since then, new construction has destroyed far more trees. A tree canopy survey was requested last year at City Council by Eric Admin, and I'd like to know the status of the tree canopy survey. And I would like to know if there are ways we can prevent the mass destruction of trees on private property.
Because we're at three minutes, if you can wrap up.
Usually for development. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Grayland. And we will be talking about Tree City, I think, USA tonight.
Next, we have Rose. I'm going to go ahead and have her join the meeting. Rose, are you there? Can you hear us?
Yes, hello.
Great. Can the council hear Rose? See Rose?
Hi.
All right. Rose, your three minutes starts now.
Hi, my name is Rose Hendricks. I live in Kenmore. I'm here to reiterate my support for reexamining the budget allocation towards contracted policing and judicial services, to divert resources towards community investment and to put pressure on King County to implement reforms such as ending paid administrative leave for officers under investigation, demilitarizing, capping overtime, and requiring the sheriff's office to be liable for misconduct settlements. Kenmore's budget is tight and getting tighter, and it behooves us to consider what the proportionally massive amount of money going towards contracted public safety services is specifically doing in our community and how it might be better invested. Additionally, as a pedestrian and a cyclist, I'd like to applaud the council's decision to prioritize the safety of all community members over marginal gains for the efficiency of drivers, where such decisions must be made throughout Campaign Zero. This project is a great example of improving public safety through community investment. I appreciate the hard work and careful consideration that has already gone into it, and I'm excited to see it progress. And I'd like to just welcome Eli to the region. I hope you like it and say Black Lives Matter. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rose. All right, next we have Elizabeth Mooney. I'm going to go ahead and bring her in. Elizabeth, can you hear us?
Elizabeth? Hi.
Hi, Elizabeth. Can the council hear Elizabeth?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Go ahead, Elizabeth. Your three minutes starts now.
I'm not trying to not see you, but for some reason, it's not showing my face, right?
We do not see you, no.
Yeah, I don't know. You all look very friendly. So I was hoping to say hi and, you know, welcome you into our.
Hi, Elizabeth.
Hi. My friend Jim is here.
I show your video, Ms. Mooney, being off. So.
Oh, there. Let me just turn it on. Why not? I've got bird pictures in the back. There. Can you see me now? Yes. Hello, go see my laundry.
All right, your three minutes will start now.
Thank you, Kelly. So what I wanted to say is, I'm Elizabeth Mooney. I live at 5934 Northeast 201st Street. And the main message that I was coming here to talk about is that the environment is so important to us. You know, I'm president of PERC, People for Environmentally Responsible, Kenmore. We actually had the privilege of working with the pre-Forterra people on a piece of property. I know David Baker is aware of that, and we have a conservation easement. So I'm just thrilled that tonight's meeting has everything to do with the environment. And thank you. I also want to briefly say thank you to Brian Hampson and Bridget Baker, because they have been helpful in researching some issues about the asphalt fumes that a group of us have been working on. So there's been a little community group of really wonderful, smart, dedicated, passionate people, some of whom have given public comment. And I'm very grateful to be friends with them. And I have, we have received some of the Microsoft data. But in terms of environmental justice and everything that you're talking about here is so wonderful. We have, you know, that, I don't, I love elephants and gorillas, but we have got a toxic, potential toxic problem in our city that is just not good. And it is harming us and making us feel sick when we bike on the Burt Gilman. And I know you know about that. So we did some research and thankfully came up with, here, I'll just, that's why I wanted to be on. This is what we got from Puget Sound Clean Air Agency. And again, thank you for some of the information that came from Bridget and Brian, because we bird dogged this. And this is a violation. And we've gone a little further to find out. And I think Rob Carlinsey, I want to thank him. I think he's had communications with some of the legislators, not just Jerry Pallett. But the point is that Puget Sound Clean Air Agency cannot get the testing that our city, in our opinion, needs to have at the stack of the asphalt facility. They have a permit that allowed them some tons in the 1990s. This basically shows that they have added equipment. They weren't supposed to add equipment without getting new permits. And they have, this is from March 2019. COVID has made air pollution more dangerous. And I think it is our right to now get testing at the stack of not just the particles, because the Microsoft Maple Leaves are doing particle analysis. We'd love to get together with people that are in charge of that, because it's really hard to understand without talking to that person. But we need the VOCs. We need to know what volatile organic compounds are coming out of there.
Ms. Mooney, we're at three minutes, if you could wrap up. Thank you, Ms. Mooney.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mooney.
Next, I have Ava Combs. And I'm going to go ahead and let them into the meeting. Ava Combs, are you with us?
Hi, I forgot to change my daughter's name on her Zoom user.
Can the council hear and see? Great.
My name is Drew Coombs. I'm a landscape architect, working with Maureen Colasizzi on Squire's and Log Boom. And I'm also part of the Ad Hoc Steering Committee. And I just wanted to express my support for the work that Jennifer Dixon has done on both projects. Her creativity and exploring both sites, as well as Rhododendron and what they mean to the city of Kenmore, has really expressed a character and quality that is really exciting to see. And I've been really thrilled to have an opportunity to work with her on the work, as well as collaborating with Maureen through the process. Her leadership for Jennifer throughout her guidance with the steering committee has really brought a great expression of art to your community. And I just wanted to express my support for the work that she's been doing. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Coombs.
Next, I have Stacy. Allow her into the meeting. Stacy, are you with us? Stacy?
Can you hear me?
Yes, Stacy, we can hear you. Can the council hear Stacy?
Yes.
Hi. First of all, I just wanted to thank all the council members for their support and being part of the curbside meals. It was a big success, and everybody appreciated. The other thing that I wanted to say is that I agree with everything Vicky Grayland said.
Can I ask you for just a moment? I'm sorry. Can you state your last name for me?
Valenzuela.
Okay, I thought that was you, but I just wanted to, thank you.
Sure. And I live in Kenmore. The other thing I wanted to bring up is that the work with the artists, one of the things, it's pretty pricey, first of all. But the second thing was that a lot of the residents of Kenmore that have been here for years and years appreciate the local artists, as well as, I don't see anything about the Native Americans, the squawks, that were originally here. And if something can be done to incorporate that, that would be great. And it's also an opportunity possibly to have maybe over at Squire's photographs that Dave Peterson of the different wildlife and maybe, you know, educationally pointing in which direction to look, you would find, you know, this wildlife in our area and take advantage of that. And that's all I really have to say. But thank you.
Thank you, Stacy.
Thank you, Ms. Valenzuela.
So Mayor, I have somebody on the phone, one call-in person tonight at 206-817-0862. I want to allow that person to talk, because they don't have a way to communicate with me, like raising their hand. So I'm going to go ahead and allow them in and see if.
Yep, fine.
Okay.
Hi, this is Carol Baker, and I'm just, I'm part of the Planning Commission.
Thank you. Hi, Carol.
And I really don't have anything to say, other than I commend your work that you've carried on during this COVID season and our great leap forward as we tackle some of the social issues that have surfaced. I'm mainly just testing my connection to see if I can be prepared for the Planning Commission meeting next week. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Carol.
Thanks, Carol.
So last opportunity. I don't see any more hands raised. If you do want to speak to the council, please raise your hand in Zoom, because that is the only way I'll know you would like to speak. So I think we have one more person. The name is N. Hanson. Are you with us? N. Hanson? N. Hanson, are you with us?
Is muted. Are they muted?
Are they muted? Okay. Let me ask them to unmute.
I thought I was, I thought I was okay. Now, can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead and state your name, please.
Nancy Hanson, and I live in Kenmore. I want to support especially the items Vicky Grayland mentioned on wetlands and trees. And I think we all need, at least I know, I learned so much just with a talk on wetlands a few months ago. And I thought I knew a lot already. But I think we could benefit from more educational, you know, things that would be offered through the city and for all of us to be more knowledgeable about what we're dealing with and maybe open it up to the community as well. That's about all I have to say. I think just more knowledge is important in this process.
Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you very much for your comments.
The last opportunity. I don't see any hands being raised. Last opportunity for public comment. I am not seeing any more hands, Mayor.
Okay. Let me get to where my notes are here. Ms. Grayland, thank you so much for your comments. We're going to be looking at a lot of that on tonight's agenda. Please stick with us. Rose on the police budget, we are looking into a number of issues. Councilmember File is working with me, and we're trying to get some answers to a number of questions, especially since we joined the President Obama and the mayor's pledge. Ms. Mooney, thank you for the information on the cement plant. And I know you're interested in particulate counts, and we will be getting information here at a future meeting, I think it's in July, on the leaves that are planted around on various poles that are examining the environment. Mr. Combs, thank you for your comments on Ms. Dixon. We will be looking at that later on tonight. And Ms. Valenzuela, thank you for your support of the artist. And we will certainly look into Indians and what they're, where they would fit in her artwork. Ms. Baker, thank you. And I'm glad the connections work. And hopefully you'll be able to join the Planning Commission. And Ms. Hanson, thank you for your comments and the support of Ms. Grayland. I mean, Ms., yes, Ms. Grayland. So thank you. Thank you all for your comments. Next item on the agenda is going to be the consent agenda. Is there a motion? Is there a motion? And I'll second.
Sorry, Mayor, I didn't catch the first.
There was a, there was a.
Thank you, Councilmember Kane.
Yep. So if there are no other comments or questions on the consent agenda, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is the business agenda. And this is the environmental sustainability initiatives. Mr. Carlinsey and Adam Nebenzahl, the management intern. Mr. Carlinsey.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, so just a real brief 20-second introduction, then I'll turn it over to Adam. So you as a council, for the next year or so, you have adjusted your council goals, and you have put climate action plan and other environmental sustainability initiatives in your council goals, and in particular, your top five. So as you know, we as staff take that as marching orders from you. And we put time and resources into the things that are important to you as a council. And we've been very fortunate to have Adam Nebenzahl join us. He is getting his master's degree from the Evan School of Public Management at University of Washington. And he has a degree in environmental policy. So it's a really good fit for him to be helping us with a bunch of projects this summer. Tonight's presentation is actually part one of a part two presentation. Part one, Adam will go through these different programs, including climate action and the plan for the plan. Part two will be on July 13th. And based on your interest in the different programs tonight, I will come back on July 13th with a description of how all that will impact staff workload and what projects and work items and tasks will need to be delayed or deleted in order to make room for all these environmental initiatives that we'll be talking about tonight. That's on July 13th, when we'll be talking about staff workload impact. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Adam.
Thanks, Rob. So I'm just going to share my screen with a lady quickly. All right, and everyone can see that? Slide deck of PowerPoint.
Counsel, can you, Mayor and counsel, can you see that? I'm seeing a black screen.
How about now?
Okay, yep.
Okay, sorry, I switched over a couple of things. Okay, so good evening, everyone. Thanks for hearing me out this evening. So we, I'm going to talk about five or four different proposals. And then I have Ally Lakehart from Fort Terra coming in to talk about the Green City Proposal. So the first one is the long awaited enacting of a climate action plan. Looking back in January from the notes of your retreat, I think Councilmember Shrubnik put it pointedly when she said, "Action is needed urgently to forestall and reduce the magnitude of climate change. Cities have an important role as they own buildings and are responsible for zoning in every form, building and energy codes, streets, bikeways, and sidewalks. May the situations and problems that we're already seeing today, the impacts of climate change have already been existing in the region. You see rising temperatures, rising temperatures since 1900. Annual air temperature has increased by 1.3 degrees Fahrenheit, causing a decrease in our snowpack. Weather extremes, heavier rains getting heavier, followed by increasing periods of drought compromising our stormwater systems, as well as our valuable watershed programs. Rising seas, which sea levels are rising at unprecedented rates, predicting to be 2.5 to 5 feet higher by the year 2150. The climate change, climate change will harm people and communities based on age, gender, and health. Links shown between climate change and disease, like the recent COVID-19 outbreak, show the large-scale diseases could be more of a risk in the future to our local communities. And these are just some of the issues. The New York Times even posted an article last Thursday about climate change being tied to pregnancy risks, which I recommend people read if they haven't already. So I guess then where do we move on from here? Well, we are kind of already at the pre-first step for this climate action process. The very first step is leadership commitment, which is what you all are here this evening to do. With your support moving forward, we will be able to begin tackling Kenmore's greenhouse gas emissions. And then upon leadership commitment, we hope to begin phase one in July, measuring our greenhouse gas inventories. So step one will look a little bit like the photo you see here of Shoreline's municipal greenhouse gas emissions from their 2012 Climate Action Plan. We hope to be using the ClearPath software from ICLI, which I'll go into more depth later, to help measure these emissions. Richard Sawyer, Debbie Bent, and I were able to meet with the ICLI staff this past Wednesday, and we were able to see how the software would work and how we would utilize it. The pie charts, like I said, are from Shoreline. And although our emissions won't look exactly the same, obviously, this is definitely a good example of what to expect from the results in some form. Overall, we expect this process to last four to six months, culminating at the end of 2020, assuming approval and beginning in mid-July. Step two, which would be establishing reduction targets. We hope to forecast the what-if scenarios using the same ClearPath software from ICLI, as well as presenting and getting approval of how much Kenmore should aim to reduce their greenhouse gas emissions by and in what timeline. King County's forecast modeling from the 2015 Strategic Collision Climate Action Plan is shown here, giving an example of what this forecasting will look like. We expect the reduction targets being set in about the first quarter of 2021. And then following that, step three, which is the main crux of the project, which will be creating the climate action plan itself. Depending on the inventory results, this will really set the direction of the climate action plan itself. We hope to tailor the plan and policies we wish to implement based on the inventories. You can see here the layouts of Portland and Shoreline's respective climate action plans and how they organized it. And we expect this step, we expect the climate action plan itself and the designing of it to last through the entire calendar year of 2021. Step four and step five, implementation and policy, followed by monitoring verifying results. So step four, once the plan has been agreed upon, then it will be up to city to enact these policies established in the climate action plan and the timeline that has been set. The climate action plan itself should have goals set in a tiered system, we believe, to work the most efficiently, with different criteria determining which policies are placed in each tier. Criteria can range from time to cost to equity to effectiveness, et cetera, et cetera. And then finally, step five, monitoring and verifying results. It will be expected that every five years, these greenhouse gas inventories be measured again to see the progress that the city is making toward achieving the reduction targets. And we expect step four and five to begin and continue onward past 2021 until reduction targets are met. As seen by King County, they are currently updating their strategic climate action plan right now. And five years after their initial climate action plan. And this timeline should be summarily followed for Kenmore, moving forward of whenever we begin our process or finish at least phase three of the climate action planning process. So that kind of gets into the question that Ms. Grayland brought up about costs. And just to go into that just very briefly, we have put together two possible budgets, a high end and a low end. Both options, both have us working with a consulting agency for steps one through three of the climate action process, which are the main forms before implementation, at which point the city itself would implement the policies. The high end has the city, just actually, sorry, really quick going into the assumptions that were made. So we decided to implement into the cost two years of greenhouse gas inventories. Now, you might ask, why two years? From a scientific point of view and from just a pattern point of view, it's really, it's more beneficial to look at it from a multi-year point of view because that then allows for patterns to be seen in these greenhouse gas inventories. And so you see that in the line, main, first line of the proposed uses of 15,000 versus 68,000. I want to clarify that in the low end, that would mainly entail the city, mainly entail the consulting agency focusing only on gathering greenhouse gas inventories for the only community level. The city itself then would gather the municipal levels using the ICLI software. For the high-end budget, you will see more of, the city is not involved as much. It's not doing, it's only doing some minimal trainings, is only kind of just following what the consulting agency requires or asks of the city. And at that point, then it would require a lot more investment. From here, then you see emission reduction targets. The rest of these data is from step two through, through emission reduction targets and the climate action development, including community engagement. That is based on a set of options that the city can work with and that ranges, the high end and low end ranges amounts can vary, depending on what exactly that the city gets, decides to invest in. In the attachments of the climate action plan, you'll see the breakdown further where that exact money is coming from, that exact cost. And then for the implementation, as was recommended by the cities of Shoreline and Kirkland, a budget, an intergovernmental budget of about $30,000 each year to implement policies, along with the cities, each department's own budget, to be focused on implementing these green policies to be moving forward. And then finally, the cap update, including greenhouse gas calculation, depending on if we just, if we feel like we've learned enough or we want to work again with the consulting agency further, then that will require further investment in the year 2025 to further invest in redoing the greenhouse gas emissions inventories. Considering that I'm going through a lot of information right now, I thought maybe I might take some questions because this kind of wraps up the climate action plan portion. And before I get on to the other topics, I thought maybe if you guys had questions right now, maybe I would take some.
And Adam, if I could just add one thing. This is, these budgets are, and I think you mentioned this already, I just want to reinforce that budgets are for consulting dollars. This does not include staff time. And like I said, staff time will be presented to you on July 13th.
Yep, exactly. Thank you, Rob.
Mayor, can you see the hands that are being raised from council?
Ms. Curtis.
Thank you.
Oh, Adam, thank you for all the work you've put together here. Had a couple of thoughts. In general, I think presentations should be understandable without a lot of background already coming into it. So the goal is citizens could look, look at this presentation or read it online and understand it. So one of my concerns was that a lot of abbreviations were used and acronyms that weren't obvious. And some of them, you've cut a slide from somewhere else. So you can't introduce, you know, on that slide, you know, what does the K4C mean? What does CAP mean? What does ICLEI mean? So I was thinking maybe a glossary of terms, because there's a lot, you're trying to cram a lot of information into people really quickly. So maybe a glossary so they can kind of get up to speed instead of seeing these mystery terms and not really understanding what they mean. There was one on page nine, the concept of campuses. I'm not, you didn't really go into that in detail, but I saw it and I don't really know what that means. So just, you know, I'm always like, give me as much information as you can so I can kind of, you know, understand all the details. Then if you could go to page four, I had some major concerns on page four.
I'm going to stop sharing my screen really briefly, just so I can do that. And yep, okay. Yes, I'm on page four.
Page four. Can you show the screen for all of us?
Sure. Hold on one moment. Sorry, I did not prepare for, kind of just running into this situation. So I apologize. One second.
No, the goal is always to improve and make it better.
Yes, sorry, this is my first presentation ever to a council, so I appreciate.
I actually was pretty impressed with how well you're doing.
You're doing a great job, Adam.
I, I thought to myself, how, you know, that guy looks pretty young compared to me. And he's doing a good job presenting compared to how I would have done.
Appreciate it. So can everyone see that? Page four, I'm kind of in a double view right now, but.
No, let's see, the presentation, page four.
Oh, presentation, page four. Oh, my apologies, my apologies.
Yeah, so where we've been.
Yeah.
So the first thing, it said current impacts.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think it would be more accurate to call it current and future impacts. Because you're talking 150 years from now, how much higher the sea level will be? I don't think we can call that current. So, so I just think it'd be a little more accurate. And I have a major problem with the little section on the climate change will harm people and community. And then it talks about health, health issues. And I think climate is, again, if you let it go crazy, it affects every area that you can think of. And as I looked at all the information, and I went through every single thing that you presented for us, and it felt like health was a little less of a concern compared to fish and wetlands and the true climate in physical environment. So my, my, and, and the link between COVID and climate change, I think, is pretty sketchy. So it just feels like this whole health problem line could maybe be simplified. Something like climate change will harm people and communities, period. And I would just leave it kind of vague and end it there and not try to link it to specific diseases or anything. Because once you start doing that, then you say, okay, now it needs to be part of a dashboard. And to collect Kenmore-level data on a lot of the health effects, it's going to be so hard that I just don't think it needs to be a focus. We have enough true environmental work to do. I think we can just leave that off. And, and if people really wanted to add something beyond that period, I think rather than age, gender, and health, the single biggest determinant will be someone's income level. So the honest truth is, poor people are going to bear the brunt of environmental change more than rich people. So people who can't afford to move, people who have to pay more for electricity, pay more for heating, pay more for gas. So, so I think I'm inclined just to leave it, people and communities, period, and delete the rest. But, you know, I don't, you know, that's just a thought. And I will stop there and then, and when we talk about budget, I've got some thoughts on that.
Yep.
Anybody else? I'm not seeing the whole screen, so if you want to go ahead with questions, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Baker. You know, I want to thank Adam for his presentation today. And I thought you brought up a lot of good information. And of course, climate impact does have diversity in social issues and health issues within it. And so I applaud you for, for bringing that forward. And I hear what our fellow council member Curtis was saying, but we do have to look at diversity and equity factors when we are looking at climate impact and climate change and our portion in that and recognizing that as well. So thank you for doing that. I also appreciate that you incorporate an element of if we should include community. I feel often that is an underutilized outlook to not partner with nonprofit partners. And they're a great support system to reduce the overall workload and help carry some of that workload. And excellent steward partners to community work together with local governments and beyond. So thank you for that. I'd like to see more of that moving forward.
Any other questions? Seeing none. Adam, you want to continue on then?
Sure, I think Councilmember Curtis did have some budgetary questions, though. He said he would come back to that.
Councilmember Curtis, you have more now?
Just at the highest level, I'm inclined to use the, the tools that are available that are less expensive, rather than hiring, spending too much consultant money. And particularly, I was concerned about in the 2020, the. And particularly, I was concerned about in the 2020, the using such a large amount of money, and it seems like it came out of the Strategic Opportunity Fund. There we go, 73,920. And I guess I see the Strategic Opportunity Fund as something, it's kind of ongoing, long-term. And it should be, no, th- this issue, I'm sorry. This issue of environmental, you know, improvements and climate action plan should be seen as a city function, city responsibility. It's ongoing, it's long-term. It's the basic work of city government. The Strategic Opportunity Fund, I see it as sort of like cover disaster. So if something comes up that we need, you know, a million dollars because part of our road slid into the lake, or if there's something on our 20-year CIP plan and suddenly an opportunity comes up and we could use a couple million to make it happen now. And generally, I see it sort of as a loan that should be repaid. So to spend $73,000 from our Strategic Opportunity Fund and never see it again, doesn't, doesn't feel to me how I'd prefer that money to be spent. So in general, I'd prefer to just go a little bit slower and figure out a little better way to, or different way to fund it.
Any other comments?
I, I have a couple of thoughts and, and I'm going to need Adam's help here. And Adam, it looks like you're bringing up something for. Oh, okay. So on the two budgets, one thing that gave me a little more comfort on the lower consultant budget is that Adam and Richard and Debbie had a good meeting with ICLI. And ICLI has that software that will help us calculate greenhouse gases. And from, Adam, can you explain to the council why your, you know, our comfort level with, when it comes to calculating the greenhouse gases? Now, I want to talk about the other aspects of the plan. But when it comes to, when it comes to calculating the greenhouse gases, how you might be actually more comfortable using the lower end of the consultant range?
Yeah, so I was going to get a little bit more into that once I went through the ICLI membership. And the reason why my screen was up, I was, as Councilmember Curtis mentioned about abbreviations, I wanted to make sure I gave the proper abbreviation for ICLI moving forward. However, I do not recall it off the top of my head, so I apologize, Councilmember Curtis.
Took me a long time to find that one.
But, so, yeah, for the low end, so we had a meeting last Wednesday and we met with the ICLI membership team, individual named Kale, he kind of went through a demo showing us what exactly the tool would look like. And regardless of which plan we end up going, if, even if we worked with a consulting, we would end up having to get the membership anyway. And so working with that, the, from what I saw on the tool was that it was very intuitive. It has trainings available to it so that someone like me could use it. It, it's very, it's, it's available for people who are new to the software as well as there's tech support. There's a man, they specifically named a gentleman named Tom. That would be the person that would be working directly with the city of Kenmore for this tool. And so basically, it would cut down on time to do the lower end because you're working, having the community greenhouse gas inventories taken from, from the consulting agency. And then I would probably be, as long as I'm an intern here, I would feel comfortable using the software as the point person because of how intuitive it is, because there are lessons, they have trials online. They also have specific letters that you're able to send to like Puget Sound Energy to get that data, to say exactly what you need, how you need it, why you need it. So using that software, it's very intuitive that it makes it very easy for someone like me who may have never used that tool before to be able to use it. So that's why from at least the low end, I do feel comfortable promoting that lower end spectrum, at least from step one with the greenhouse gas inventory calculation. From that aspect, I do feel comfortable promoting the lower end.
Well, that's, that's step one. But when it comes to cap development, especially the community engagement part, we may want to tap into the consulting firm a little more. Adam, can you explain that?
So they basically have much more experience, or I, I can't actually speak to that necessarily. I don't know how much experience Kenmore has, but they have a lot of experience, at least specifically in the environmental aspect of knowing the right questions to ask, knowing how to sit down and engage each community specifically and understanding what are the right ways to ask, what are the right ways to format these meetings? Who are the, who are the key stakeholders that need to be interviewed? That need to be engaged in this field? And as well as they also have a lot of experience in developing climate action plans, like Shoreline specifically worked with a consulting agency, like Cascadia Consulting Agency, to help develop their climate action plan. And they had them all along the way because they didn't have as much experience, even though they had someone who was an environmental coordinator on staff.
Yeah, so I may end up recommending that we spend a little closer to the high end when it comes to the community engagement because, just because of the consulting firm's experience and know-how on how to do that on this specific topic. So we may end up with kind of a hybrid between the two, between the high and the low. Councilmember Curtis, as far as your question about Strategic Opportunities Fund? Yeah, that's really up to the council where you want to find the money. You could, you could also go to the general fund balance. You know, that the general fund has money in there. You know, keep in mind what we've been talking about as far as the overall budget goes with the pandemic and everything. But if this is a, if this is a high priority and an urgent need for the, for community and for us doing our part globally, then you may want to allocate funding there. But the, the funding, the two funding sources I can think of are the general fund and the Strategic Opportunities Fund. As you can see, we're also proposing that the surface water utility help pay for it a little bit. And basically, that's just their percentage of the overall budget. As a, if you, if you look at the surface water utility budget and compare it to our other operating budgets, we just use that same proportion to estimate the surface water utilities contribution.
I guess I am a little concerned with all of the budget adjustments that we've done to try to, try to keep things in perspective. I'm just concerned that there are some other programs that may have to go in order to fit this in. Or can we financially fit this in given what the whole budget picture looks like?
You can see there's some, in the first couple of years, there's what I call some one-time funding. And then there's going to be ongoing about $30,000 a year plus staff time in the outer years. And as you can see, we haven't determined where to find that $30,000. It might be from cuts and other parts of the budget. It might be a revenue increase. We just don't know yet.
Councilmember File.
I have a question for our city manager, Rob Carlinsey. Do we have? Let me just review. I'm going to restart. Do, when it comes to working with nonprofit partners as a method to approaching some of our city work on different tasks we have, it's a great way to delegate. Is there any reason why we don't really move that direction more frequently? Or is it just past practice that there hasn't been a, a good connection to working with our nonprofit partners?
Like, what would be an example in this case?
And so if we, if we were to diversify some of the workload by working together with Sierra Club or Perk, whether it's implementing some of the community engagement and education, that could reduce part of the cost of the program. And it's what they specialize in. Also, when Adam had brought up the fact that we would use our consultants to interview our stakeholders, we, we know pretty much who our primary stakeholders are within our community are actively involved on these efforts. But what's not very transparent is those meetings. I would prefer that those meetings be recorded via Zoom so that we as council members can have access to, to what those questions and concerns are that they bring to the table. And I think that's very important information for us to have. So I just wanted to convey those thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Member, Councilmember File. Is there anybody else? Yes, Councilmember O'Kane.
Well, I just, on the budget side, I think it will be a bit of a mixed approach. My understanding is the more, the sooner we invest in plan and the stronger and more accurate the plan and targets that we set are, the more money we're going to save our community in the long run. So I think we want to nail this. This is an absolute top priority to our community. And I'm really proud of us as a council that we were able to get this in our top five at our retreat this year. And I do support investment in this and I can't wait to learn more in detail at the, when we get closer to the budget decision-making process, what we're looking at here. But the sooner we invest, the better it's going to be for our environment and our community in the long run. And I just wanted to share that.
Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, I was going to say what Councilmember O'Kane just said. We're, we're almost too late on this entire project as it is. We can't let budgetary queasiness get in the way of acting at this point. It's something we absolutely have to move forward with. And, and I think it needs to be one of our top priorities when we get to budget.
Anybody else?
If I could just add one more thing and you know more about this than I do. But I think this is also an example for Kenmore as a small city to be a leader among other small cities. Adam, in your research, you've seen bigger cities do this kind of work. But what's your experience with cities our size or smaller?
Yeah, so I mean, you look around at the other cities that currently have climate action plans. And I'd say the most, so Burien is currently, they're a little bit bigger, obviously, but they're kind of making, they're on the same timeline as us right now. Mercer Island has a climate action plan and they're more our size. Issaquah is also a little bit more our size and they also have a climate action plan. So there are cities in the Seattle Puget Sound region that do have them. However, now we would probably be one of the smallest to have from what our research is. And from the communities and the nonprofits that I've already been speaking to from the International Living Future Institute, which had a conference over Zoom, but kind of take place in Seattle. They've reached out to Kenmore because they've heard about what's been going on and they want to work with us to work on these green initiatives and figure out what are these policies and procedures that would work best for small cities. So these nonprofits are reaching out to us specifically, showing their interest in working with us to be leaders in this and figuring out what exactly do small cities want. And so we have kind of their ear in making those decisions and whatnot.
Yeah. Also, assuming the council wants to move forward with this, which I'm guessing you probably do. I've given minutes in your top five. And what will happen is right now, the, kind of the, the R and D, the art, the research and development has been in the city manager's office. But the actual calculating of the greenhouse gases and developing the plan will move into the Environmental Services Division, which is led by Richard Sawyer. So Adam would work with Richard and, and Richard's department would have the lead on actually developing the plan and it would move out of the city manager's office.
All right, anybody else? Anybody else? All right. Adam, anything else from you?
I guess we're moving on to the next topic. So, all right, number two, we have is ICLI, the Local Governments for Sustainability Membership. And that was also mentioned, I believe, in the January retreat. And so briefly speak on to the program and the membership. Do want to mention that a lot of these slides were taken directly from their promotional, their promotional advertisement for becoming a member. So, yes.
Before you go on, I'm so sorry.
No, it's okay.
I'm recording this and for some reason on my end, your sharing screen is flashing a little bit. I don't know if it is for anybody else. But I'm just worried about the recording going forward. Can you do me a favor? Stop sharing here again. Maybe there's just something with the connection. Sorry about that, council.
No problem. Should be making sure I share the right one. All right.
Maybe that's, yeah, I can see it. I think that's good.
Okay, no worries. So ICLI is a local government for sustainability network that is leading in more than 1,750 cities, towns and regions committed to building sustainable future. They're only organization serving counties, towns, cities of all sizes, ours included possibly, and provide technical assistance, tools and resources, facilitates an interactive network of local climate leaders in the US and globally. They help cities and counties and towns like us build capacity and knowledge to make more informed decisions on protocols, data, best practices to reduce carbon pollution and respond to an ever-changing climate. Their framework mainly consists of five pathways to promote system-wide sustainability, which include low emission development, circular development, nature-based development, resilient development and equitable and people-centered development. All of these pathways would be included in some form into our climate action process. Some other benefits that are included in this is the, to participate in cohort trainings. When Debbie, Ben, Richard and I spoke on this past Wednesday to Kale, the member of ICLI, he talked about a cohort training that would be happening in 2021 that the city of Kenmore could participate in, which would bring together about 10 to 20 communities together to form the, around the United States to tackle shared priority. He noted that because we'd be working on a climate action plan, that we would be, could be formed into groups also similar to like Burien and whatnot, since they're in a similar timeline, together and working on a climate action plan together and putting, putting that as a shared priority. These facilitated groups also include trainings that can last for four to 15 months. They work with leading resources, community templates and toolkits, community online peer-to-peer platform and have speakers that come regularly. They work towards shared outcomes, actually developing action plans, helping with greenhouse gas inventories, climate action plans, zero energy buildings and more. Unfortunately, I do not have a lot of information about those facilitated group trainings. But these are just some options. Other benefits include engaging international collaboration, like I mentioned before, the 1,700 global cities, towns and counties, helping with review preparation, access to United Nations Sustainable Development Goal summits, facilitated web trainings and international project coordinations, as well as international and local events to participate in, as well as is the focal organization of the United Nations Frame Convention on Climate Change. Some other terms include, some other benefits include access to grant and travel funding for hands-on learning opportunities and networking, as well as access to other cities and governments, webinars and publications posted to ICLI in and of itself. And finally, like I said, the tools, which are the most important, I think, at least at this point in time for us, to have access to the ClearPath software that was highlighted in the previous section about, from the Climate Action Plan. And so the ICLI promotes their software as a user-friendly interface with easy data entry and calculators. Like I mentioned, I felt it was fairly intuitive to use. It's online cloud-based application. It's collaboration supported with multiple users per jurisdiction. So meaning that if we have a green team in the municipality with members from each department, that means everyone who's a part of the green team in the city of Kenmore and the city staff can have accounts on there, reaching out to other staff members of other cities globally, as well as get assistance and maybe saying like, if the accounting department want to figure out different ways that they could implement green policies in their, in their department, somehow maybe that other departments have been working on that globally. As well as secure data storage with daily backups, using encryptions as secure as what you see in many banks, like 12-bit data encryption, as well as remote support and training curriculum with data collection templates, track progress over time, constant development mode. And basically, if we for some reason decided that we felt that we didn't want to be part of the ICLI membership at any. for some reason or another anymore, we would actually still have the opportunity to access the data that we've already uploaded and we can download that at any time for no cost or anything. And so that basically concludes the ICLI membership. I can take some questions on that. I'm not as well versed in this unfortunately. Like I said, I did take these slides with permission from ICLI and whatnot, so I can answer to the best of my ability in this situation.
Any questions on ICLI? I'm not seeing anybody or everybody, so if you are, yes, Councilmember Shrubnik.
Yeah, maybe this is partly a question, partly a comment. To me, this the ClearPath tool is just, you know, that in and of itself is worth the, you know, six hundred dollars a year membership. And what I'm wondering is, given that the first step is the, you know, greenhouse gas emission calculations, which would use the tool and get everybody kind of up to speed on that. I wonder if during that period, we could gauge the extent to which ICLI also has the kind of consultation that we might want. Obviously, they're not going to convene, you know, community engagement groups. I mean, that they can't, but you know, they could give guidance on that, that, you know, and they could do some of the things, maybe, I guess this is what I'm asking. Could we find out how many of the things that we might reach out for consultant for, you know, they might be able to offer?
I feel like that is something that we could reach out for and discuss. I did actually forget to mention that the six hundred dollar a year membership will be included for all the benefits. If you only wanted to buy the software, that would be seven thousand dollars. So there is a bit of a difference in investment there.
Any other questions? I'm not seeing anybody, so speak up if you have any questions or comments. Otherwise, I guess we're ready to move on to the Forterra Green City Plan.
For the life of me and I've for several weeks now, I've been trying to find out what ICLI stands for. And all I can get is Local Governments for Sustainability, which Adam has on its slide. They're headquartered in Germany. Acronym.
International Council for Local Environmental Initiative.
Thank you.
Oh.
It's not very clear on their website.
I, yeah, I couldn't. Good job, Milton. That's awesome.
It was buried in there somewhere. I found it. I was looking hard.
Councilmember Curtis, well, you know, that's that's your education coming back to you.
There we go. I just want to comment. I think this is a dirt cheap deal for what they give us. And it's structured and it's only going to get better with time as more people get onboard.
Yeah, it definitely has been developed and just I was I was surprised about the amount of things that were available based on the membership just what itself. It was kind of just like it guides, it takes your hand. It is just like, we can do this together. As well as we also have the King County Collaboration Coalition for Environmental Climate Change. And we have that opportunity to work with them too, and they've expressed interest in assisting us with gathering greenhouse gas inventories. A member from Kirkland, who's the member whose name is dropping on my head in this moment, he he expressed saying K four C would be very interested in helping us develop our climate action plan and get our greenhouse gas inventories. So we do have a lot of assistance from outside and K four C is also a member of ICLI, so they are also inside this and we can reach out to them via that app, via email, the many different ways.
Anything else on ICLI? Anybody else? I guess we are ready to move on then to.
Okay. So for our next session for Terra, I get to take a break and I get to honor to welcome to Ally Lakehart, the Green Cities Project Program Manager to help explain what the program is, will look like, and without getting into too much of what the program is, I'll just briefly say that on May twenty second, we met with Ally and another colleague of hers with Forterra to discuss the Green Cities Program and the fantastic work that they've been doing to help promote community stewardship in the Puget Sound region to help climate climate change. And I will leave it to Ally from here.
Hi, Ally, can you hear us?
Yeah.
Yes, Council can hear Ally.
Yes.
All right. Give me one second. Start here. All right, is that sharing from, are you seeing my screen?
Yes.
There we go. Perfect. All right. Wonderful. Hi, you all. My name is Ally Lakehart and I'm a program manager with our Green Cities Program. And, you know, we are here to talk a little bit more about your beautiful city and some of the benefits that hopefully you enjoy and that you protect. And, you know, I don't know what you see when you see this photo, but I am looking at those beautiful mountains and then, you know, my job, what I do for cities is help them to really look at that tree canopy and how to protect and maintain and retain it. And then in some cities, we're actually working to enhance that tree canopy for all the many benefits. And right now, we actually have a regional network of fourteen cities and Snohomish County has taken on some of this. They're not doing their entire county at this point. Some of this work, but we, you know, have a large amount of work to do. We are helping cities commit to kind of taking care of that urban forest and we serve more than one point six million people. And you can kind of see, you know, where we are, where we aren't. We always like to say there are some cities though that are doing this work. They're doing it a lot of times in house. They're like taking Mercer Island has a great plan. They're doing a lot of this in house. They have staff that are doing this work. Bellevue just put out an RFP. They're kind of on their way to doing some of this work. So these are our cities that have contracted with Forterra and have started with the Green Cities partnerships. But I will say some of these cities come to our network meetings. We have quarterly network meetings. We have a Green City Summit. That's one of those meetings every year. And so King County is usually present at those and we share information about parks. We share information about canopy. If anyone has foresters on staff, urban foresters, those people usually attend, city planning staff come, community development managers. And so it's just a really great way to for cities to connect and hopefully to really learn more about how to care for this really important resource. And I just thought it really tied in so well to what Adam was sharing. You know, this is kind of more in that implementation phase of looking at climate action, of course, a healthy urban forest reduces greenhouse gases, it cools cities. That's incredibly important, important for climate change. A ten percent increase in canopy citywide can actually result in a two percent Fahrenheit decrease in temperatures during those hot summer days that we are now having. You know, there's incredible benefits for air and water, mental health benefits. If you want to talk about the benefits of trees, I will talk your ear off. So if you have any questions about that, I can tell you all about it. And we do this kind of in two different ways. So the first way I'm going to talk about is retaining canopy that you already have. I looked and what I could find on some of the canopy planning tools was that Kenmore has about forty percent urban canopy that's in private land and kind of across. But a large amount of that is in the is in the park and that's an interesting thing. How do you count that rate? That's definitely giving you a lot of benefit. The state park, but then it also, you know, kind of changes those numbers for some of your urban areas. And we know that equitable just, you know, distribution of canopy. So moving it across the city is really important and you all sounds like talked about that. You know all about it, about areas with so more social vulnerability, you know, needing more canopy. But right now, a lot of times our urban forest isn't always managed. And this is including the wetlands people were talking about. Because A, it's very expensive and B, honestly, the science is changing. We're just learning how much we need to manage urban forests. This picture is actually showing you this is ivy growing up in those trees and ivy actually will, English ivy will choke out trees and actually will literally wipe out whole forests if not managed. And so, you know, there are also just other things, climate change, right? We know that we have a lot of drier summers. Someone was just talking about that. We have aging canopy. And so we just, we really need that constant care and management of the urban forest that we already have. And some of that can be happening through prime, you know, private residence, homeowner education. Some of it can happen through policy and some of it can happen through like volunteers getting dirty and digging in, and that's kind of what we do a lot of. But if we don't do this work, there are areas within our cities that will result in a loss of canopy over time. You know, if we have invasive species blanketing the ground, baby trees cannot grow up through those mats of English ivy or someone talked about earlier, Eli talked about Himalayan blackberry thickets. Baby trees don't survive those. And so, you know, right now we might have tree canopy, but what happens in a hundred years if we don't really have a healthy system in place. And I know you all are doing this work in your riparian area, so it's very similar in our forested parklands. And so, you know, our goal is we ask cities to start to look at their forested parks and any open areas that they have as these resources and refugia for wildlife. I know a few councilmembers already talked about this. And we hope to connect the community to the urban forest, galvanize their support for the resource. We want to improve urban forest health and the resilience of all the ecology of the area. I know we don't often think of our cities as ecological reserves, but they are. And really just increase those forest health benefits over time. And through that planning process that we do and through holistic community support, we want that long term sustainability. So we, as a nonprofit partner, I know one of the councilmembers was talking about this, that's kind of our part to help look at policy, to look at ways to fund the program over time, to find granting sources, things like that. Our first step is usually a twenty year plan, another plan. But this plan looks really deeply at canopy health, at, you know, the location of canopy and where it already exists. It definitely, you know, talks a lot about how much it would cost to really start to do this management of forested parkland and really breaks down the roles and responsibilities within the partnership. And I'm currently working in Burien SeaTac in Des Moines and, you know, we are very open to what this looks like. We've even worked with some cities on some guides and just some recommendations that, you know, because they aren't ready yet to take on that full implementation. And we've worked with other cities that have just kind of stopped here. This is the first, you know, first installment and they're waiting until that until that next step, probably for financial reasons. But also just to kind of see where they are and make some make some assessments. The other thing we kind of do look at, I know that you all have already received some canopy cover. Someone was asking for this. I can, I have some information on where this is available online through King County and King Conservation District. But there you already have gotten a canopy cover analysis done. And so we kind of take that next step with our plans and look at where like on private land, on public land, where canopy exists. And we create goals and recommendations that help support the equitable distribution of canopy. For Burien, for example, I also have a social vulnerability map, so we're really looking at where we want to do projects based on making sure that we're we're investing in areas that not only need canopy, but also the greatest health benefits could come from that. And then also we provide metrics on implementation programs to support all of those goals. Be it, you know, tree education, someone was talking about, you know, you all are looking at becoming a tree city. So, you know, maybe utilizing some of those resources, planting an Arbor Day, supporting kind of some of those those pieces because it's it's harder than sometimes it seems to plant trees in cities. The maintenance of trees is expensive and so we want to make sure that we're doing that with with forethought and and really making sure that that tree can stay its whole life. You know, some of our native, our native conifers can live one hundred and fifty, three hundred years. So really looking at the longevity piece. I mentioned we do look at forested parkland and you all do have a good, good amount of it. And so we determine the health of all the canopy that the city owns. We provide, these are really color from labs that basically it tells you the health by color. So it's really nice and color coded. It looks at kind of the canopy value and how many invasive species are present and kind of the percentage of invasive species present and gives a nice colorful map of those areas. This is in Toquilla, this is some of their parks and really helps managers like parks departments determine like where they want to start to preserve canopy in their parks. And then we, of course, create goals and recommendations and again, making sure that we're centering equity and social equity in this work. And, you know, at the end of the day.
Well, I really appreciate those colorful maps being colorblind. I can't really see them.
Oh, okay. That's real. We do have the number too, so that might be more helpful. Basically, it's a one to nine scale, nine being the least healthy and then one being the healthiest. But, you know, in the end of the day, you know, all that, all those mapping and all that assessment comes down to community based stewardship. And so we have a really, you know, Kirkland, I know someone was mentioning Kirkland Shoreline. They're just starting, you know, their plan, their plan just got approved. They're starting their community engagement work and volunteer coordination and Kirkland have been doing this for years, but basically caring for canopy with volunteers. And so Forterra does have a program called the Forest Steward Program. And then we do have community stewards, like tree stewards that we do tree related walks and trainings with. In the city of Seattle, we work with the Tree Ambassador Program. And so, you know, kind of we are helping galvanize the community. We're helping train the community to be stewards of the land that they own with everybody else, right? That's what public land is, you know, belongs to all of us. And so we have school groups, we have lots of corporate sponsors who come out. And so it's it's just the entire community coming together around the urban forest. And to date, we have restored over two thousand acres. We planted one point two million native forest plants. We have logged, I think actually this is even higher now, but over one point three million hours of volunteerism, which is at forty million dollar value. And we have kind of across the partnerships, two hundred and eighty four active stewards, although I know that number is actually higher now. And so it's a lot to manage. It's a lot of fun and our city partners are and our city staff are really what make the partnership work. Obviously, the volunteers are incredibly important. And it really creates a great, you know, community outlet for volunteerism and stewardship. But our city staff help us with all of these numbers as well. So I'd love to take any questions and this is my contact information. Please feel free to jot it down and if you have any follow up, I'd love to speak with any of you.
Questions? Yes, Councilmember Marshall and Councilmember Shrubnik.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Lakehart. Great presentation. So the majority of Kenmore's tree canopy that is on private land is in the suburban residential zone. And I'm definitely interested in trying to protect that. It's on private property. We're looking at accessory dwelling unit regulations coming up. And I'm wondering if the goals that you stated early in preserving tree canopy are appropriate to be integrated with what we do with regulations for increased building in potentially in the backyard where a lot of these trees grow and might be subject to be getting chopped down.
Yeah, that's a great question. I mean, something we are working on too. We had a grant from the Bullet Foundation to look at tree retention on private land and that's forthcoming. It's really, it's finalized and we're sharing it with with city partners who who helped work on it. But that should be coming, you know, within a few months. But we are trying to work on that question because there isn't a great, you know, policy around how to do this well in our region isn't, it's it's not well defined at this moment. So that's something that Forterra is realizing that we need to take on is it's some, you know, as a, you know, a true partner in some of these in this work is to help with some of those policy recommendations. And so our kind of goal is to set a series of recommendations for policies like that and how to do this in a way, you know, obviously, we also, I don't know. I don't know if any of you work with our affordable housing arm, but we do actually have an arm that's working on affordable housing. So we recognize that, you know, having affordable housing is essential. And so if tree canopy is also essential, how do we do both of those things? And so there are some ways to do this where we're looking at large trees, like rotating large trees and giving those priority. There's also, of course, ways to do it where, you know, you have a set number of trees that you are going to retain and then you can replace trees, especially smaller trees. So I think there's a lot of growth in that area. Honestly, there's not a really fantastic model for how to do that, but I definitely know we're working with cities and we've been working with Burien. But I definitely know we're working with cities and we've, we've been working with Burian. We've been working a little bit with this Seattle. That's a, that's a very long process that's been going on and have worked with some of those Green City Network partners to help us just hear what cities need when it comes to policy in a way that's smart and really, you know, works with development, I think, in a way that answers both of those questions. And we don't, I mean, I do have to say, I go to, I go to conferences about this. I know it's possible. It's not always easy, I think. And, and sometimes we're going to have to both give a little bit, I think, develop, developing. Yeah, anyway, so I think that that is possible. But I, I do would say like, look, we, you know, I can send that to our staff contacts. But forthcoming, we will have some information about policy and how, how we're really looking at what are, what are smart ways to do both of those things.
Councilmember Shrubnik.
Yeah. So I believe our city staff Samantha did a canopy assessment not too long ago. So my first, I have two questions. The first question is, would that help reduce the, the upfront cost and work? And then the second question has to do with the community-based stewardship. If you could talk a little bit about that, kind of who recruits the volunteers, who manages that? Is that something that's wholly out of your shop or shared with the city staff? Or how does that work?
Great question. That's all dependent on funding. The answers to that second question. As far as the canopy assessment, that's fantastic. You know, we really, it's, it's exciting to have that information and that data. King County has been working to provide cities with that information. And so it's nice that you all have already gotten that kind of, you know, yeah, gotten that in-house. You know, absolutely. I think that that is really helpful. And what we would probably do is help pair with city staff on that. If, and when you are, are ready to make canopy enhancement goals. We could look at some of that canopy data and really kind of try to pair it with some other questions. I know a lot of cities, I actually heard of a, we looked at, at canopy cover in relation to, to schools and found out that in South King County, which in a lot of places, you know, our schools had 7% less canopy within a quarter mile than the city average. And actually we got a large Forest Service grant to help address that because we had that data. So I think those are the pieces where hopefully taking the data and analyzing it really in kind of figuring out some of those questions and, and looking, you know, at the opportunities and kind of answering the opportunities with the data really is helpful. It helps develop grant applications and things like that. So that would be definitely possible through that. And to more answer your second question, there are places where, I mean, this is, I, we, we, I work in a Port of Seattle funded project. The port pays for Terra. We do the work for Burian Sea-Tac in Des Moines. And in those three cities, you know, I do all the recruitment and, you know, our team does all the recruitment. We do a lot of the volunteer management. You know, I literally have a bunch of tools in my garage because I bought them for my stewards and a COVID hit. And right now we're kind of taking a pause, although with phase two, we're, we're starting to get back into tiny little family-sized groups with just stewards and their own family, you know, going out there and doing some of this work. But, you know, we do a lot of that work. And then in some cities like Toquilla, we are just there and we have some corporate partners and we'll help them lead a 150-person event with a corporate partner or things like that. So it really depends on the city. You know, I think we say our goal is to kind of have cities be able to take this in-house one day. But it is expensive to do that. And so oftentimes we find ourselves to be a little bit less expensive to, to work with or contract with. And, and, you know, we do often find grants and things like that to support our work. Than having a city's staff in-house. I think COVID realities and budgets changing will also delay some of that for some cities. But in general, I think that's kind of our goal is that this becomes the city's program and it's a true partnership. But it is, it's owned by, by the city itself at some point. Thanks.
Any other questions? Councilmember Powell.
Thank you. So I understand when protecting and preserving tree canopy and urban forest restoration, having an integrated pest management plan can be key to the success of restoration and protecting a tree canopy. What are your thoughts on that?
Well, in our program, we work primarily with volunteers. So we do not use herbicide. Like I don't, I'm not an applicator. I do not use herbicide. I work primarily with volunteers. That's kind of my role. Although we do often, to accomplish some of these goals, hire professional crews. And it kind of depends on the site often. And we, you know, do a lot of manual removal, but if anyone's ever had to pull out blackberry roots, it takes a lot of work. And so there are times or areas that haven't been managed in many years that might take some really, it might take some, some real professional crew time. And in those cases, sometimes herbicide, although it's, 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 it really depends on the city. I mean, some cities, as you might know, have greatly restricted the use of herbicides in their cities. So we work in a lot of different municipalities. And, and honestly, we work with maintenance teams and a lot of times the park maintenance or whoever is managing that space, if it's a, you know, if it's a waterway site or something like that, will work with whoever is managing that site to kind of set the rules, if you will. But that would all be through paid professional crews. Like I said, my team, that isn't something that we, that we do. It's not a tool belt, you know, tool in our tool belt. We do work with a lot of cities who employ crews in that way.
City manager and then Councilmember Curtis.
I'll defer to Councilmember Curtis and go after him.
Councilmember Curtis.
My question relates to Forterra. So we heard an earlier presentation on getting rid of invasives along the Mammoth River. So do you have like different parts of Forterra that do totally different functions?
We do actually, yes. So we actually have the traditional land trust kind of model that still exists. So we're helping cities like yours. Sometimes we'll buy land and then we'll transfer it to city ownership when the city, you know, at that, whatever we bought it for, kind of, you know, usually it'll last to us kind of thing. But that's kind of how we function. We also manage conservation easements. We have been starting to do some affordable housing. We've been asked to use our, our real estate prowess to, to be of benefit in urban areas. And like we are working in Hilltop of Tacoma right now on some attainable affordable housing and some mixed-use space. And so we kind of do a lot of different things as an organization. And I would invite you to check out our website anytime, but I, I personally work on the stewardship team. And so we steward land with cities on the Green Cities team and with cities on the Riparian team and with private landowners. And then we actually have a lands team as well that works on our land that we own or have easements on. And we do check those easements to make sure if someone says that they're not going to build a home on it, that they don't and things like that. So, yeah, we have, we're about 90, 95 people strong over at Forterra.
Thank you.
Mr., Mr. City Manager.
Yeah, I just want to point out that on page two of Adam, on page two of Adam's memo, it talks about Forterra would charge us for the service.
Yes. And I do have some, you know, I can definitely answer some of those questions or have different, some, some more numbers for you all. If you had particulars about that, you know, or, or at the future meeting or, yeah. I think our goal is also to try oftentimes and pair cities to find funding for, for that. And so that's something that we have done often as well. So it might take a lot longer that way, just keep an ear out and try to figure out. Sometimes we find corporate sponsors, sometimes we find grants, sometimes we fundraise to do that work. But that's another option that a lot of cities, and, and I also talked to Adam and, and, and the whole team really about how we're, we're also very okay with kind of working very slowly or piece by piece. We're working with Mountain Lake Terrace and we're, we're just developing their forested parkland assessment and really looking at their assets that they have in public land and seeing the health of them. And that's just where we're starting right now. And that's, that's kind of as far as we're going at this point. So, you know, we're pretty flexible in that way that we would love to just work with you all in whatever way that you can.
Any other questions? No, no other questions? All right. Adam, Tree City.
Okay, cool. Awesome. Well, thank you, Ally. And I actually, prior to this, I had some experience in Ameri, in AmeriCorps doing some stewardship for the city of Seattle, working in Mercer Island and Kirkland, do leading volunteer groups. And just my own experience of leading these volunteer events, it's so powerful seeing kids and whatnot, just showing the next generation the importance of working on the land and planting trees. And so many people walk away. So many new friendships are bought, are made from this experiences. And so I've just had my own experiences of being in the stewardship field. And so I promote Forterra for the work that it does as well. So Tree City USA, we're more than halfway done. So our penultimate topic, like we says, the Tree City USA program, it's existed, existed since 1976. It's a nationwide movement that provides the framework necessary for communities to manage to expand out of trees. Currently, more than 3,400 communities, making up 140 million people, are Tree City USA members. Based upon their website, their requirements for becoming a tree city are only in four. So first you need to have, there have a tree board or department. I apologize for that typo, or a department. So someone must be legally responsible for the care of all trees on city-owned property. This can be a professional forester, arborist, the city department, citizen-led tree board, or some combination. A tree care ordinance, a key section of the qualifying ordinance is one that establishes the tree board or forestry department or thereof, and gives them responsibility of tree care. A community forestry program with the annual budget of at least $2 per capita. And an Arbor Day observance and proclamation. Some of the benefits that Tree City USA likes to promote, and I think Ally kind of made some mention to it, at least from the reduced cost for energy stormwater management and erosion control. Trees yield three times, three to five times their cost and overall benefits to a city. Cut energy consumption by up to 25%. Studies indicate that if you use three additional trees planted around each building in the US could save $2 billion annual in energy costs. Ally mentioned something about like shading and 2% lower in energy reduction. Boosts property values across the city, can increase property value from 7 to 20%. Builds stronger ties to the community, trees and green space directly correlated to greater connections in the community, as well as educate people living in the city about the value of trees and the importance of sustainable tree management. That's basically all I have regarding this. There are no additional costs to becoming a Tree City USA member other than the $2 per capita requirement. And yeah, it would just require doing the tree ordinance as well as the other three steps that I mentioned. Do we have any questions regarding that?
Councilmember Shrubnik.
Yeah, I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we have the first two things with Samantha and the ordinance that we have. So that's one question. And then the second question is for the third component, the budget. Do they include things like, you know, staff time to run events and things like that? I mean, so in other words, does it have to be, you know, $2 per cap just on, you know, trees per se, purchasing trees and maintaining trees? Or is it, you know, all of the things that go, that are involved in that?
I do not have the answers to that question, but that would be very crucial information to call them up and ask them regarding those. They are fairly easy to contact and I would be happy to clarify that information for the council member.
And, and the first two things we do have, I believe, right?
Rob, do you know anything? I do not off the top of my head.
What are those key things in particular?
Tree board department or?
The single point of responsibility and the tree care ordinance. I believe we have those, right?
Well, we have a tree retention ordinance, but I don't know if it's the same thing as a tree care ordinance.
There are some examples of tree care ordinances that I have compiled that I didn't prepare ahead of time. But I could, and we could go back and compare those and see how similar they are, at least in that situation.
Yeah, but I think, I think number one, we can meet pretty easily. Two wouldn't be too hard. Even the $2 per capita, it's not like you have to allocate, you know, in our case, close to 50 grand. There's a lot of things that we're already doing in our activities that we can already count towards that $2 cap per capita. I don't know if we would get to the full 50 grand, but I bet we could get some of the way.
Yeah, that, that was essentially my question. Thank you.
Any other questions? I'm not seeing anybody. Okay. Yeah, I guess one of the things that I'm concerned with is we've opened the tree ordinance a couple of times since I've been on the council. Each time we do a little bit better about retaining trees. But we're still clear-cutting. There's been a lot of development over on the south side of town. And there's been a lot of clear-cutting going on. And I still think there's ways to build and retain trees and not have the entire development site clear-cutted. And yes, you can, you have to plant trees, but they're small little trees that take, that take the place of these big majestic trees. So I really would like to look at this to see if we can manage to continue to keep the canopy we have instead of reducing it. But that's just my two cents worth. Anybody else?
I just, excuse me, Pierre. I just want to thank you for your statement and I'm right with you. So thank you. And thank you for the great presentation on this, Adam, Mr. Nemensall. Thank you.
Yeah, Adam, you're doing great work on this. Thank you very much. Anybody else on Tree City USA? And if there is, please jump in because it wouldn't, we're sharing the screen. I can't see everybody. So, all right. It looks like we're ready to move on.
All right.
Salmon Safe certification.
Yeah, we've reached the final topic of the Environmental Sustainability Evening and Salmon Safe Certification. So Salmon Safe has been working in the Puget Sound since 1998, promoting ecological, sustainable land management practices that protect water quality and aquatic biodiversity. Salmon Safe is the first certification program linking municipal land management practices and, and the protection of downstream water quality. To become a Salmon Safe certified member, there's an eight-step process. So first off is, I'm just gonna quickly go highlight these. As this stated in the memo, there's a bit more of what is required from each side of the development. But so it includes scope and planning, water quality protection analysis. So expert review of current practices and infrastructure that is done by mostly the science team of the Salmon Safe Certification Program. Then key operational site assessments where members of the city and the science team that Salmon Safe works with go to the sites that are in question to figure out the situations. Finally, the science team certification decision report development. They give their review of the situation as well as the recommendations of what to do moving forward. Certification finalization and the city review of the certification report, followed by city adoption. Certification implementation of said review and development. And then public education awareness and support. You can see Portland was the first Salmon Safe city. And when we talk about public education awareness, we're talking about these education campaigns and advertisement campaigns that Salmon Safe would help develop and work alongside the city of Kenmore to help create. The cost for this program will be at no more than $34,800 for a five-year certification. And then about 50 to 60% of that thereafter for recertification for the next five years. Other than promoting good stewardship, participating in this program aligns with Kenmore's comprehensive plan vision, compliance with the city's MPDES Phase II municipal stormwater permit, regional WRIA8 salmon recovery efforts, goals for environmental protection and stewardship, and also the council's 20 to 21 priority number three, which was develop a Kenmore Climate Environmental Action Plan, including water, air, forest, and habitat restoration. Salmon Safe is also currently working on how this would affect aspects that would be important in our climate action plan, like greenhouse gas emissions reduction, as we've stated a couple of times this evening, like riparian effort zones and like how much greenhouse gases, those, what type of sink that is and how much that is useful. So how much Salmon Safe and their riparian efforts do affect that, that would be very helpful in this program. That would be very helpful in this program. And hopefully Salmon Safe will have this information available once we begin implementing Phase Three and developing the climate action plan, so we can input that data directly and show in our climate action plan what the city of Kenmore has already been doing. And so that ends the salmon certification. And I'll just briefly go into the conclusion, and Rob kind of, and I talked about this really briefly before. Before I take any last questions, I do want to say with the projects that Kenmore is taking on, I see Kenmore having the ability to be a leader as a small city, implementation of green initiatives. It can be really hard to implement many of these policies that can be geared towards larger cities, like our neighbors in Seattle, but with communication with, with organizations like ICLF, and then ILFI, International Living Future Institute, Salmon Safe, For Terra, among others. I see Kenmore as an opportunity to lead and develop policy that is more inclusive of smaller cities like Kenmore. So I will take any questions about Salmon Safe, as well as any other questions that we have from this, all five topics. And I thank you guys for letting me speak to you this evening. Yeah, so any further final questions?
Adam, this is really, really good. I mean, you've only been with us a short time, and this is an awesome presentation. You've done a lot, covered a lot of information. Anybody with questions on Salmon Safe? And I can't see everybody, but council member Curtis.
So my problem is, I feel like a kid in a candy store. I want everything.
Yeah.
I want to protect the trees, and I want to protect the salmon, and I want to protect the water. But as a council, we have to balance that against time and money, and resources and people. So that'll be the hard part. Getting excited about this is really easy. It's how we're gonna actually manage it and make it happen, and what other programs we're gonna cut to, to pay for it. So I'm willing to be part of that hard work, but it's gonna be hard work.
Any other questions? Again, I'm not seeing, ah, deputy mayor.
Yeah, Councilmember Curtis said what I was gonna say. These are all really great, really exciting, but it is, there are gonna have to be some, some decisions made. I don't think we're gonna jump in on all of these. But I really appreciate the work of pulling all this together, and I look forward to seeing what, what direction we end up, what decision we end up making.
Yeah, it'll be interesting. I love all of these too. Councilmember Shrubnik.
Yeah, I had the same comment as Councilmember Curtis, which is, I'm super excited about all these. I don't think we can do them all at the same time. I'm, I'm thinking, I mean, where my head's at is, you know, how do we make a roadmap or a climate action plan that kind of lays out a, a work plan, and that could be guided by, you know, what has the most impact? You know, some of these are a little bit easier to implement. For example, the Tree City USA is probably low-hanging fruit relative to, you know, the For Terra, Tree City USA. I mean, the, the For Terra partnership. So, you know, I'd love to do them all at the same time, but I don't know that we can do them all at the same time. Maybe over time, we can do all of them.
Anybody else? Yes, Councilmember Rokin.
Thank you, mayor. I just wanted to also commend Mr. Nemensall for actually tying in each of these initiatives, opportunities to the city of Kenmore's initiatives really eloquently. And one thing that I heard was there are things that we're already doing that really support what's in place. So we might be surprised as we look at the budget, what's really there. And I will echo what I said earlier today. We are going to have to make some hard decisions in, in this time environment. We don't have much time to lose as far as getting ahead of it, and these programs will help us get ahead. So I'm excited about what we've seen. I recognize we're going to have some tough discussions, but I really, I really am proud of the work that you've put together, Mr. Carl Lindsay, as well as Nemensall. All this is really good work for our city, so thank you.
Great. Any other questions? Seeing none. Again, thanks, Adam, for all the work that you've done and put into this short amount of time. It is really appreciated. Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is the ad hoc public art committee's recommendations to accept Jennifer Dixon's final artwork designs for three walkways and waterways projects at Log Boom, Squires, Landing, and Rhododendron Park. And authorize authorization for the city manager to enter into a fabrication and installation contract, contract number 20-C2159 with the artist Jennifer Dixon. Marine, call it easy. I know I'm butchering your name, and I'm very sorry for it, but...
That's okay. Let me, let me start off, I wanted to thank the council for having us tonight. I know you have a very busy schedule, so we're gonna try to finish this item without too much delay. But I wanted to allow, let you know that we're gonna be able to address one of the public comments in another effort that hasn't been done yet. It's called the interpretive signage piece of our projects. And it will address tribal history and other topics like wildlife habitat. So I wanted to make sure I addressed that, because I know David Mayer Baker, you had basically said we were gonna look at that issue. We are, and it's a little different than public art. It's more about interpretive information. And so I just wanted to make sure that the council and the public know that we are still looking at doing that part of our project that's still to come down the road. So thank you for letting me address that public comment. And now I'm gonna introduce Jen Dixon. And I wanted to start off by saying that we have had really a wonderful public process to first hire an artist to go through the design, and also a nice community that came together of our ad hoc committee. Members of our community, Stacy Admin, Sarah Hachey, and I probably didn't say her name well, but she's the one that helps us with our art in City Hall, Arts of Kenmore. Nancy Ausley, again, you heard from Dave, David Francis, who we brought in as support from the city of Shoreline in his understanding of public art as an art, public art coordinator. And then lastly, Dean Koontz, who you had heard, Drew Koontz, who you had heard from as at the public comment. In addition, we were led, our process was led by Carolyn Law, who is also a public artist, but she's a consulting public artist. It really was her help in the early stages that set the stage for the hiring, the RFQ, and the hiring of our artists in the selection process. So I wanted to acknowledge those individuals for their volunteer and support during this process. And you've had your time with your council agenda, so I'm not gonna belabor all of the other details that are in there. I really want Jennifer to have an opportunity to speak directly to her artworks. But tonight, what we're asking you for is to approve the artworks, the final designs, to allow us to enter into a fabrication contrast, contract with Jen, Jennifer Dixon, so that she can take this, these concepts, these designs into reality. With that, I'll let Jennifer speak.
Hi, I wanted to thank the city council and the city of Kenmore for this opportunity to share the artworks that I'm wanting to proceed with at the three parks. That's Log Boom Park, Rhododendron Park, Inspires Landing. I also wanted to just acknowledge the ad hoc committee and the design team. They were just a joy to work with and really informed the work that I did. So mostly what I wanted to get across is how excited I am about this project and that, and to be selected. I just, when does an artist get a chance to work at three parks simultaneously? And the first, the first time that I went to each park, I loved the individual sort of spirit of each place and the usage, the location, and I was excited about the prospect of potentially deepening people's connection to nature, as well as creating a, a connection between the three parks. So with that, I'm gonna go ahead and move on to the slide presentation. Okay, can, does everyone have that up? There we go. Is everyone seeing that slide screen?
Yes, everybody's seeing it.
Okay, great. So really, what I wanted to talk about is sort of the concept and what the artwork is about. So work is really about water and its flow or movement. So this idea of water moving, flowing through the watershed, in addition to the natural water cycle that transports water through a tree and back to the sky, from the sky to the tree, and back through the tree, and back to the sky again. And then, in addition, the, how water conveyed timber during, historically during the, at Log Boom. And then lastly, the movement of water that created the land or the topography of Kenmore itself. So I'm using a visual vocabulary that's really kind of the language of trees that also look a little bit like water, to talk about kind of this movement and transformation. But it's all been distilled down into these three ideas or images of water, land, and trees. So at Log Boom Park, I, when I first saw an historic photograph of log booms, I was just completely taken with this massive collection of timber and how it was, how it was moved or conveyed on the water. And so this was one of the primary institutions that I had, that I used for Log Boom Park in particular. So here's some historic log flumes. And although, you know, historically, flumes were not used at Log Boom Park, they do sort of provide a similar historical purpose, right? They still move the logs or the timber via water. And so I just thought their forms were so beautiful, and the trestles were so beautiful, that these inspired sort of the forms of the main artwork at Log Boom Park. So here are the art locations at Log Boom. And so you can see, just to place, can you see my cursor here? So here's Bergman Trail, and here's the beach, here's the main plaza. So there'll be concrete stamping, here's a, here's an example of concrete stamping in, an image embedded into concrete. So we'll have that at the stairs, the picnic pavilion, the bench and table, so all the, the yellow areas. And then the pink areas, there'll be seat walls, and those seat walls are concrete. And those seat walls will be formed with boards to sort of allude to or suggest the timber industry. And then at the beach area, there's a, there'll be some stone benches, and I'll assist with kind of helping design those. So those are still to be determined, the details will be worked out later. But the main sculpture is here at the boat rental building and this planting area. So here's the boat rental building, and here's the planned view of this, the form of this sculpture, which I'm calling Flume. And what it's replacing two downspouts here, and will collect all of the water from this entire roof and channel it into this rain garden planter area. And so, let's see. So here's an above version picture of the model. This will be made out of weathered steel with scaled trestles. And one thing that I'm excited to sort of see is what kind of during a rain event, depending on how much water is coming through this, I think it could create its own event. Perhaps there's gonna be sound, and I think it's, I'm really excited to see what that could potentially, what could potentially happen there. So this is a west elevation. Again, the planter area, it's not really a rain garden, even though we're using mostly plants that you would find in a rain garden. But it's not a real rain garden per se. And then this split rail fence that you see here, there'll be a modified version that surrounds this garden area to discourage entry into the building. And the great thing about this is the split rail fencing, you can find it all three parks. So that's kind of a, a continuous vocabulary there. Okay, now we're gonna move to Rhododendron Park. So here is Rhododendron and the art location. So let me just locate you, here's 68th Avenue. Here's the basketball court, the parking lot, the, right here is the playground. And then right here is a brand-new asphalt, fairly new asphalt path that takes you through the wetland and to the Semamish River, which is right here. And so what I'm, what I wanted to do is create a series of markers that would take one from the park to, over the wetlands, and to Semamish River, and then back again. Excuse me. So here, this is this magnificent snag that is at Rhododendron. And it's at the 68th street entry, pedestrian entry. And when I saw this, this tree, this snag, I was just so taken with it. I love everything about it. I love the mass, massiveness of it. I love the marks from history and the marks that the animals have made. It has, it has its own story, right? I love that about it. And it's, well, it's that, I was looking at the, this bark, and it looks like it was burned. I'm not sure if it was, but I, I liked that it looked like that. And so this snag really, really, really informed the materials and the techniques that I am using in the artwork here at Rhododendron Park called Three Cedar Trees. So I'm using a combination of carving and burning, and I'm using a century-old Japanese technique called shoshu-ubon, that it preserves the wood through charring. And what that does is it shrinks the cells of the wood and makes them less permeable to, to any kind of damage, like insects or water. So here's a, an illustration of what the artwork will look like. It's three cedar logs, 18 inches in diameter. One is six foot, one is seven foot, and one is eight foot. And the designs that I've mentioned, the kind of theme of the artwork at all three parks is water, trees, branches, land, topography. That vocabulary will be, theme will be, excuse me, on each, carved and burned into each of these three cedar logs individually. And then on the reverse side, as you're coming back from the river, there's gonna be a story poem that is carved into the face of the, of the trees, or the trees, which will read, "Every tree in the forest is a fountain." The second one, "Creating giant rivers of water in the sky." And the third one, "Providing rainfall hundreds, even thousands of miles away." So each log sort of tells the story of water, and particularly the story of this cyclical movement of water from the sky through the trees and then back up to the sky again. And so hopefully, this will also connect the viewer to its natural environment as well. So here's some photos of the, the work on site. So the first one, which is six feet, will, it basically marks the pathway to the boardwalk, the asphalt pathway to the boardwalk. The second one, which is seven feet tall, marks the beginning of the boardwalk through the wetland. And then the third one is at the edge, which is eight feet, is at the very end of the boardwalk and before you head towards this Semamish River. And here's the back, the backside. So now we're coming back from the river. Here's the beginning of the boardwalk heading back to the park. Every tree in the forest is a fountain. The second one is at the end of that boardwalk, creating giant rivers of water in the, of water in the sky. And then the last one in the park, that takes you to the park itself, is providing rainfall hundreds, even thousands of miles away. And so my idea was that I really wanted to create an experience for the viewer, and sort of in this way that maybe it feels like a journey to the water and back. Okay, Squires Landing. So the first thing I wanted to say about Squires Landing is I was so excited the first time I went there, and I The first time I went there and I just couldn't wait to, I just can't, I couldn't wait to start thinking about artwork there if I was to get the commission. So what my first and kind of lasting impression of Squire's Landing is how calm and peaceful it is and how it's really a place to connect with nature. It's all about the natural habitat, the wildlife, the water. And so I've always felt strongly from the very beginning is that the art should not distract at all from this natural environment and natural beauty of the park itself. But what I wanted to provide is hopefully a place where you could experience it, this beauty. So here is, on Squire's Landing is a second growth stand of cedars. And it's, the first time I went there and I witnessed this, the stand, I just went crazy because I think, I just think it's so amazing. Not only just the massiveness of the trees and the number, but kind of the specific environment that's created with these, in this area underneath the trees. There's a play of light and shadow. Sound is somewhat different there. And then the ground underfoot feels differently. And so although visitors to Squire's Landing will not have access to this cedar stand because of environmental ecological reasons, it's sensitive, it greatly influenced the design. And I wanted in some way to honor the stand, the cedar, the cedars, and to kind of allude to this stand through the artwork. So here's just, it's shadow, light and shadow. Okay, so this is the, the upper plaza at Squire's Landing. So this is the parking lot where most people will be entering here and here. And so the artworks that will, the artworks that will exist at this location, there'll be laser cut screens right at this corner here that welcome the viewer and will also provide a tie-in to the main artworks, which I'll show you in a moment. So here's an example of a laser cut metal screen. And then again, I'm using this theme, thematic iconography. There'll be concrete stamping that will relate to Log Boom Park. And here's an example of some of those designs. So then we go to the lower sections. So again, the places, the upper plaza is up here, the waterfront. And here's the lagoon right here, Swamp Creek and Semamish River. So at the waterfront plaza, there'll be concrete stamping here and over here at the picnic pavilion. At the board, you know, this design, to me, it's like all the, all the paths or all the roads lead to these viewpoints or to the water. And so I wanted to kind of highlight these moments on the boardwalk through a shift in color of the views. You have views of the water, or you're just getting ready to have, you know, to come upon the view of the water. So to kind of build up that anticipation. And also kind of a subtle little allusion to, or you kind of to, to suggest a shift underfoot, like I mentioned at the Grove, at the Grove. The yellow is guardrail. And along the guardrail, I'm going to have, there'll be E-Pay top rails. I'll show you the artwork that I'm doing for that. And then the, really the main work, the artwork, is these three viewpoints here. So the E-Pay top rail that I had mentioned along the guardrail, I'm going to be carving into or etching words, kind of story poem intermittently along the, along the boardwalk there. And so this is kind of this idea that this story or this poem would unfold for people in different ways depending on how you approach, like what route you're taking to the viewpoints and your route back. So it's always going to kind of read differently. Whoops. And then here are the, here are the viewpoints that I showed you before. So one overlooks the Semamish River. One is located right at the confluence of Swamp Creek and Semamish River. And then this, here's Swamp Creek here. This one overlooks Swamp Creek, but it also is adjacent to that cedar stand, which is right here. So what I really wanted, because there's these opportunities right on the river's edge, is I really wanted to create artwork that would engage the park's active wildlife and also kind of enhance and hopefully enhance the natural setting there. So the artwork, there will be three bird blinds. I'm calling them bird blinds because they were inspired by traditional duck and bird blinds. So the roof of each one will sort of create this profile that suggests a bird in flight. And it's meant to really merge into the landscape, not stick out from the landscape. This is the plan view. So you can see that the artwork is going to be made of weather, weathering steel, just like the Flume sculpture. And that natural rust color will, will really, you know, kind of blend, again, blend into the natural environment and also provide sort of, or frame the view or provide a vista. The, so the guardrail here, screens here. And the roof will both be laser cut. And they will kind of provide an ongoing play of light and shadow based on time of day, time of season. And again, I kind of wanted to mimic or refer to the cedar grove. And then lastly, so each roof line of each bird blind will be made out of the same shape. But they'll each be folded in a different way, sort of to create, each one will have its own distinctive gesture. And they'll also each have their own individual theme, again, water, land, and trees. And so making each bird blind, not only the view that you're looking at or the environment you're looking at, but each one will be unique in its, in its design. So that's, that's the end. I thank you for your attention and I look forward to questions.
Questions?
Yes?
Do I see any hands?
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead, please.
So I think these are great. I'm particularly excited about the, the art at Squire's in particular, but all of them are great. The one question and kind of concern that I have is, and I think it was the second slide, and I looked at it, you know, before today, where the, the actual sighting of the Flume sculpture. I, right there, you've got the, the boat rental building. And then almost next to it is the beach. By definition, those are going together. So you've got a pretty active space there. And I'm, I'm concerned about, you know, you, you taking up space on the ground for that because it looked like quite a bit. And then also fencing it off. It just, it, there seems like a lot of potential conflict there.
Let's go to that slide, Deborah, that you're referring to. Oops, let's see. So just, so I'll show you, let's, let's do the art location one.
Yeah.
Let's see, I need to share the screen. Okay, I am just, can you see my screen now? Okay, so here's the, here are the art locations here. And yes, the beach is here. There's the boat rental building here. There's the boat rental here. Let me just pull this up. Let me pull it up as a slideshow because it's pretty tiny right now. Can you all read that or should I bring it up to? Okay. So here's where the artwork will be. But it's coming off of, it's actually connected to the roof. Or it's, it's not actually connected, but it's just below the roof to catch the water. So here, maybe this one's a better, you know, maybe the angle isn't so great. But what, this is 13 feet right here between the building and the, this rain garden area where the fencing happens. And then the, sorry. Then from here to here is 13 feet. This is actually 13 feet here and 12 and a half feet here. And then at this point where, I'm realizing that maybe this isn't the best view to talk about what your concerns are. So right here, where this trestle, that's, this is the first connection of the sculpture from, you know, from the roof line here, is it over 10 feet? It's like at 11 feet. So all this will really be open. And we really talked with the maintenance about this circulation and how important it was to keep, and I didn't want it impede anyone's movement through here at all. So it's almost going to serve like a gateway, standing under a gateway. I don't know, does that address your question or your concern, Deborah?
Possibly. So it's, I guess it's the, I mean, if it were just the Flume, and yes, that would be kind of like an archer gateway. But there's the whole, I, and again, it's kind of difficult to see how big that is, but it looks substantial, the green area. And that that would be locked off right where people, I mean, that is literally where people are going to want to traverse from the main.
Let me address that question because it's more of a site plan question that you have. So if you don't mind going back, Jen, to the site plan image. So Deborah, the, that was always designated for a planter bed. So when, when Jen came in to, to suggest her artwork, it was really taking advantage of an existing planting bed. This, our, our promenade, we call it, is over 10 feet in this area between the beach and where users are going through. And also wider on the backside, actually, it'll be probably more like 12 feet to the edge of the. Yeah, 13 feet. So it's, it's pretty wide, yes. But the site design has always been hard to get a little bit around the boat rental building on the south side, but there is plenty of room around it. And we're also utilizing this as drainage. It is, it is a point in which we're collecting our necessary drainage to, that we're required to take away from the site and put it underground into piping. So it serves multiple purposes. It's a landscape bed. It happened to be a really great place for Jen Dixon's artwork to coexist. But that planting bed was always scheduled to be there. And it serves the purpose of both landscape and also for the purpose of drainage in addition to the artwork.
Thanks, I appreciate the clarification.
Thanks, you're welcome.
Any other questions? Again, I'm not seeing everybody, so go ahead and speak up if you have questions.
I've got a comment.
Yep, go ahead.
So as a kind of math and science and non-art kind of a guy, I am so excited about what you've produced.
Right, thank you.
A combination of creativity and function and variety. And yet there's enough pieces that kind of pull it together. So the three parks will have a sense that, that they belong together. I am just, I'm excited to see this work done.
Thank you so much. Thank you, appreciate it.
Yes, Councilmember O'Kane.
I'd like to echo Councilmember Curtis. I feel we, as the City of Kenmore Committee and Ms. Klytsey, your role in bringing in Ms. Dixon, we really have top caliber artwork coming in. And I really appreciate the feeling, the sense of it. As I read the PowerPoint before this meeting, wow, this is really going to be spectacular. And then getting your verbal perspective of it just kind of expanded the, the beauty that you're bringing to our city. So thank you and thank you to the committee members.
Any other questions? I've got to apologize for the lighting in here. My back, I had to move. And as a result, it's dark, so I'm sorry for that. I'm trying to hold my iPhone flashlight on my, it's better lighting. But anyway, all right.
I, I've got a quick question for Maureen, if I could.
Please.
So I was taking one of the walks that I've been taking more of because of the working from home quarantine situation. And I went through Squire's a bit and I ended up finding that stand of cedars that you highlighted in here. I wanted just to double check with staff that those weren't getting touched by anything, by anything. Okay, I just needed to hear that after seeing it.
I apologize. I'll just remind the council that we will have to do some work to limb some of the branch, the lower branches of those trees. But we'll be doing that in conjunction with an arborist on site. So they'll be overseeing our work.
No, it was just kind of a fun thing to find randomly, this, you know, line of trees laid out there. It was kind of a, it was a fun find and they're obviously, they add a lot. The other comment I wanted to add is kind of along the, what Councilmember Curtis said, I don't have an artistic bone in my body, but these all look like they will add something, not generic, but something that actually adds to the specific locations they're going in. They're thoughtful. So I'm excited and I appreciate the work put into this and thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right.
I had one question regarding ADA issues and the ability to read the story and read about the art that's supplied at each site. It's often overlooked that we are, can be short sighted on the issues, especially for those who are visually impaired that still enjoy our outdoors. And I think we could be a little bit mindful and try to apply some sort of brow plaques along, something along those lines that would be most appropriate and really addressing our community's needs and those who would visit our community.
Yeah, that's a good point. Yeah, I agree. We can definitely look into that and see if we can include that.
Councilmember Curtis?
One thing I was noticing, some of the art will be visible for people going up and down the Semamish River. They will get to enjoy our art as they go by.
Yeah, that's what I was hoping.
Councilmember Marshall? No, I see your hand going up and so I thought you had something. All right, anybody else? Thank you. I guess we need to have this authorization to the city manager to proceed with this. So, um, let me find it here.
Mayor, do you want me to read it to you?
Yeah, would you please? Thank you.
So this would be accepting Jennifer Dixon's final artwork designs for three walkways and waterway projects at Log Boom, Squire's Landing, and Rhododendron Parks. An authorization for the city manager to enter into a fabrication and installation contract, contract 20-C-2159 with artist Jennifer Dixon.
So is there a motion?
There's one.
And I'll second. Any further discussion on this? Seeing none. Then again, this is to authorize the city manager basically to enter into a fabrication and installation contract, contract number 20-C-2159 with the artist Jennifer Dixon. If there are no further discussions, the clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember O'Kane? Yes. Councilmember File?
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Herbig?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Shrevnik?
Yes.
Passed unanimously.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, council.
Go forth and fabricate.
Okay, I shall. I'm excited. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to let the council know that we're. Okay, leaving meeting. I guess we're leaving meeting. Thank you. Sorry, do you want me to bring Maureen back? I apologize. Hold on just a second. I think she wanted to tell you something.
Please let her, we want her to say something.
I know. I'm so sorry. I was too quick. Maureen, I apologize. I was too quick to, to click off. Go ahead. That's, I just wanted to let the council know that our goal is to come back to the council, hopefully in late July, to give you an update on the projects that are still underway for construction. And you'll be hearing more from us soon. So that was it. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Great. So we are, I guess now the next item on the agenda then is King County Cities Climate Collaboration, K4C, a letter of joint commitment. Mr. Sawyer?
He shall be joining shortly. Richard, are you there? Can you hear us?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Great. Council here, Richard. Thank you.
Excellent. I am here to discuss the King County Cities Climate Collaboration Letter of Joint Commitment. I just have a kind of a brief summary of what that is, and I'm hoping to get council to include the City of Kenmore as a partner on this joint letter of commitment. So the city, about a year and a half ago, the city joined the King County Cities Climate Collaboration, which has been referred to as K4C. You've heard Adam mention it in several of his presentations earlier. This is a group of partners that includes several cities within King County, King County and the Port of Seattle, and provides a group of partners that can share ideas and work with each other to meet climate action goals. And they've been very helpful. They're going to continue being very helpful as we work on our climate action plan development here in the future. But in 2014, a group of partners within this collaboration actually kind of wanted to take it a step further, and they developed what they called a joint letter of commitment and outlined several specific goals that if a partner wanted to sign on to, they would be, you know, committed to achieving these goals. And then they updated that list recently in 2019. I provided a copy of that letter, both a kind of a clean version, and then I also included a version which actually highlighted the 2019 updates. So hopefully council has had some time to read through that. I'm not going to just sit here and read through that whole letter. That would be a really long night. But I just wanted to highlight a couple of things. This joint letter really, it does a good job. It actually establishes some shared goals with specific greenhouse gas reduction targets. It outlines how to actually move forward in achieving some of these goals. And while we may not have the answers right now, I think as we develop a climate action plan, we'll, we'll start figuring out how we're going to meet these goals, what we need to do to meet these goals. But I think that taking the step now to just saying, hey, we are committed as a city to eventually reaching these goals really sends a strong message. And, and even some of the concerns I've heard tonight are outlined in this plan. I know Councilmember Curtis and Councilmember File previously mentioned kind of the concerns about how climate change is impacting vulnerable communities. So in this letter, in that very first section, they actually added some new language into some existing language about the need to recognize these, recognize these vulnerable communities and, and take a specific effort on figuring out how we're going to support them and, and, and find solutions to make sure that those communities are taken care of. And then, as I said, you know, you can go through many of these goals and some are very specific and some are just, you know, committing to support local, you know, legislation that impacts climate change, all the way from the local regulations, all the way to federal regulations. And day-to-day operations, et cetera. So as I've mentioned, as we develop our climate action plan, I think the how we're going to do this is really going to come forth, but joining a letter like this will be great for, for providing a good, clear message that we're committed to working with our partners on this. So the, I just want to kind of bring this to your attention as the staff represented it to K4C, but I'm hoping that council will support having Deputy Mayor Herbig go and actually sign and include the City of Kenmore on this joint letter of commitment, which many other partners have already had an opportunity to do so. I know several other cities are doing the same thing right now, bringing this to their council and, and showing it to them and, and hopefully getting them to sign on as well. So with that, that if there's any questions, I'm happy to take those.
Yeah, that's a great idea. I'm all in favor. Councilmember Shrubnik and then Councilmember Curtis.
Yeah, just a quick question. I'm certainly all for this. I have kind of a numerical question. If, if we don't have the 2007 baseline, does King County kind of provide that to us, or do we start the percentage from when we get baseline? Because that would be a much shorter timeline though. I'm, I'm just curious how, how other cities that are coming in later like us are operationalizing that.
Yeah, so King County has established some countywide baselines, which are available. I can't remember if Adam spoke to this directly, but as part of our greenhouse gas emission inventory, we could, we would also actually go back and look historically and establish a more Kenmore specific baseline that we could utilize. But there, there is, there are countywide baselines that we could utilize. But yeah, as I mentioned, we could also establish our own.
Councilmember Curtis?
So I, there was so much information in all the different handouts that I don't like, know exactly if what I'm going to refer to is in this document or somewhere else, but it was talking about decreasing greenhouse gases by 80% by 2050 compared to either a 2007 or a 2020 starting point. My concern is if, if Kenmore grows from, let's say it was about 18,000 then or 22,000 now, and it gets up to about 45,000, so we doubled the population, is it even theoretically possible to decrease greenhouse emissions by 80%? So I guess I'd really like to see the science. It feels to me like somebody put their hand in and pulled out a number and said, this looks good. I, I cannot believe this is even theoretically possible to do. So, so I need, I guess I have a hard time supporting something that I, doesn't make any sense to me. So I'd need to see the numbers, where these numbers came from, these goals, these targets.
Yeah, and I, you make a good point, but and I can follow up and see where because these shared goals are coming mainly from King County's research. So I can see why the specific numbers were picked and what data it was based on. But I think the.
I'm okay with supporting the letter. So I was saying that. I, I just, I really have a hard time with these numbers. It's like saying we're going to decrease transportation by 80% in another 20 years. It makes no sense. So something, something's wrong or something I don't understand. So I'm surely, it could just be my ignorance.
And I think it's, but getting everyone aligned to that goal and figuring out how to do it, because today there might not be an answer. But if we don't all sit down and commit to finding that answer, then it's not going to happen. And this letter is just a way of establishing that commitment to figure it out so that we can take this kind of pie in the sky idea and make it a reality.
Deputy Mayor, it looks like we're going to be asking you to sign this letter. What are your thoughts?
Um, you know, I was just trying to dig through and see if I had, if I could find some of the presentations I had seen at K4C the last couple of meetings. They did have some gap analysis done, and it did account for growth because everybody realized that King County is going to continue growing unless something drastic happens. It was factored. I don't remember the details off the top of my head, and I can't find the exact presentation right now. But I do think that staff, or I think Rachel could probably get us some information about that. I just don't have it in front of me right now.
But you're comfortable signing, right?
Yeah, yeah. I'm happy with that.
Any other questions? Yes, Councilmember O'Kane.
Um, I was just, I think maybe echoing a bit of what's already been said, but I, I did just do a quick search and recognized Ken was, you know, small for us to be able to make such a big impact. But when we as a region come together, those targets become more feasible. And I was just looking at, just an example might be Portugal. They've got a target to reduce between 85 and 90% by 2050, relatively small country with a lofty goal. But they've got a plan that's actually on track to, to make that. So as we each do our parts, we fit into a whole, because it's not just Kenmore meeting those targets. It's the planet. Like, we all have to come together and just target as much as we can. And yeah, anyway, I just wanted to point to that. It's not just us. It's much bigger. Working together as a whole. Thank you.
All right.
And I did forget to mention, I mean, the, early in the letter, it does recognize that, you know, each jurisdiction is unique and that, you know, it recognizes that each partner is going to pursue and be more effective on different goals than, than other jurisdictions that have their own unique characteristics of their community. So it recognizes that. It's not everyone thou shalt have to meet this. You know, it's going to be each jurisdiction doing what it can.
All right. Any other questions? I am not seeing anybody. If I'm missing them, please speak up. But I'm not seeing anybody. So then we're looking for a motion to.
So move, that we agreed to sign on to this letter and support the K4C Climate Action Plan.
A second.
Basically to include the City of Kenmore on this K4C joint letter commitment. So we got a motion and Councilmember Curtis, you seconded?
Oh, I did.
Oh, Deputy Mayor, you seconded. Great. So I have a motion and a second. This is probably easy enough. Well, let's go ahead. Kelly, you want to call the roll?
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Kane?
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Herbig?
Yes.
Councilmember File?
Yes.
Councilmember Shrubnik?
Yes.
Passed.
All right. So next item then, we're not going to go through all of these items on a staff report, but we are going to find out about the pandemic update and the coronavirus relief funds. And the other two things, the Parks Project and the Transportation Capital Investment Improvements, you can read about those in the memos that have been prepared in part of your packet. But let's go ahead and start with the pandemic update. Mr. Carlinsey?
Thank you, Your Honor. Hey, one thing really quick, back to the environmental things we were talking about. If it's okay with you, we're just going to go ahead and join ICLI. If we do that now, Adam can get a head start on a few things. So if there's no objections, we're just going to go ahead and join ICLI.
Are there any objections? I've got you all in view. Anybody shaking their head or no? Everybody shaking their head, yes? All right. Yes, please do.
And then on the capital improvement projects, for, just for the sake of time, the, the memos are pretty self-explanatory for both parks and transportation. But just know that the, the pandemic may, A, slow things down a bit and B, reduce some of our capital revenues. And so we're going to keep an eye on that. The bridge contractor has already given us notice that the pandemic might cause a delay in the bridge. I'm not saying that it will or that it has, but he's already put us on notice that it might. So those are just the, those are the two main things. We're keeping an eye on capital revenues, like real estate excise tax and impact fees. And then we're also waiting to see how it affects schedule for the contracts that are already underway.
So then in order for transparency, let's, let's just be clear, because nobody said anything. I assumed it all because everybody's shaking their head, yes. So all of those in favor of joining ICLI, say aye.
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 Those opposed? All right, unanimous, join ICLI.
And the cat.
We didn't have a first and a second. You're just getting consensus from the council?
Yes.
Okay.
Because that's all the city manager was looking for, was consensus.
Okay, just checking.
Somebody's cat is in favor of it too, so.
There you go.
So on pandemic, so as you know, we are in phase two of the Governor's Restart Program. And we have several objectives when we're dealing with this pandemic. You know, we want to help slow the spread in the community, want to help keep our population safe, and also our city employees safe. So we're kind of opening things up slowly and incrementally. City Hall continues to be closed to the public, but we are taking phone calls. We're having the receptionists come in for four hours a day from 10 to 2, Monday through Thursdays now to take phone calls. And the hangar, the public portion of the hangar is now open, but there's only three tables in there. And there's lots of signage about, you know, rules of engagement in there. And, and then we're also going to be opening up park restrooms tomorrow. They'll be open for most of the day, but still a little bit more limited hours for park restrooms. And then employees are going to be allowed to come back a little bit into City Hall. We're still trying to encourage employees to work from home as much as possible. And, and I should, I should say that I'm talking about office employees. Our field workers are already out in full force. Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, doesn't general government fall under phase three and not phase two?
Right. And so we're still closed.
Okay, but you're talking about bringing more people into the office. Wouldn't that be a phase three operation more than a phase two operation?
Um, I'm, I'm only going to be allowing three employees per floor to come in. And they have to be distanced and they have to follow certain precautions, things like that.
Okay.
All right. Where was I on that? Yeah. So I think, I think that summarizes where we're at on the pandemic.
All right. You want to say anything about the relief funds?
Yeah, I'd like to turn the time over to Debbie Bent to talk about that.
Let me bring them on.
Yeah, as you know, we are getting about $699,000 from the federal government called the Coronavirus Relief Fund. That's good news, but there are restrictions on that money. We have to, we have to spend it on COVID-related things. We can't use it to cover for losses in revenue or anything like that. It has to be for COVID-related things. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Debbie. And Nancy Ausley will also jump in when it talks, when we're, when we're talking about the potential assistance for businesses. So Councilmember File?
Yes, thank you. You know, it's 10 o'clock and we've been going for three hours. I'd like to make a request that we take just a short 10-minute recess and reconvene.
Um, how about five?
We're almost done, aren't we?
Yeah.
This is my last item, but.
Yeah, like, is there a way to just finish?
You'll, you'll. You have council comments.
But Karina, you want two or three minutes?
I, I think it'd be great to be able to just.
Let's go ahead. For Karina's sake, can that take just a couple of minutes and we'll come back and wrap this thing up?
Thank you. All right, I'll be pausing this recording.
Yes, pause it.
So go ahead. One minute here. All right, we are back live and recording.
Wonderful. All right. Mrs. Bent, if you'd be kind.
Thank you. Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. So as Mr. Carlinsey mentioned, we're looking for council direction this evening on the use of the $699,600 of coronavirus relief funds under the Coronavirus Aid, Relief and Economy Security Act, or the CARES Act as it's, it's known in shorthand. The city can receive reimbursement for eligible costs between March 1st and October 31st. The city can receive reimbursement for eligible costs between March first and October thirty-first. And the allocation that we received was based on Kenmore's two thousand and nineteen population. The Department of Commerce are administering the contract and reimbursement. And when the city requests reimbursement, we have to meet the five-point test that commerce commerce has provided. So in the, in your packet, we have provided an estimate of how those reimbursement costs could be. And we've estimated that five hundred and ninety-five thousand, seven hundred and nineteen dollars are potential city costs that we could seek reimbursement for. And sixty percent of those costs fall within two categories, the payroll, COVID-related costs and compliance with COVID compliance, such as measures to support employees teleworking and social distancing requirements. The city's also provided seventy thousand, five hundred dollars to human service agencies. Ninety-four thousand dollars, we think, could be reimbursed related to public health related measures such as supplies, for example. And we'll, we've also included twenty thousand in there for a potential community survey related to COVID. So that's another question for council to address tonight is does council want to proceed with a community COVID survey? So of the remaining one hundred and three thousand, eight hundred and eighty-one dollars, staff are looking for council direction on how that money should be allocated. So this is the money remaining after the potential city eligible costs. So there are several possibilities. Council could decide to allocate additional money to human service agencies in addition to the seventy thousand, five hundred already allocated. And if council wishes to do that, staff recommends that that be done on need. Council could also allocate additional money for rental assistance. And in the agenda item, it's noted that CDGB funds would be available for Kenmore residents to apply a nonprofit which King County has yet to determine for rental assistance. And that amount is approximately six hundred thousand for the northeast region of King County. So if council decides to allocate any additional money, staff recommends that this be provided to a nonprofit to administer those funds who already have a rental assistance program. Finally, council could decide to allocate a portion of that remaining fund to business. In the public health category of costs, there is already an assumption that thirty-one thousand dollars would be allocated for business kit supplies to support business opening and a thousand dollars to support supplies for the incubator. And of the twenty-five Kenmore business, businesses who applied and the eleven recommended businesses who the city recommended for grants through the Working Washington Grants, the city received notice today that two Kenmore businesses received a five thousand dollar allocation. Both are women-owned and one is minority-owned. One is a speech therapy and one is a retail. So that's just sort of an update on potential categories that the council could allocate. So that's what we're looking for council direction tonight. Thank you.
And if I could, can I just add something to Debbie's presentation if that's okay?
Please.
So she briefly mentioned the possibility of doing a COVID-related survey. It'd be, it would be a statistically valid survey done by like EMC Reach Research, probably, which is a firm that we've used in the past. Who would ask questions about, you know, to our population about, you know, just trying to get a sense of how our population is doing? How are they out of work? Have they, you know, are they, have they been furloughed? Just getting a sense of how they're doing and then also seeing if we can cross-tabulate it by demographic. But there's caveats to that because the, really the largest sample size they would do would be three hundred sample size and you don't really get much better data after three hundred sample size. But if we want to see how our minority populations are doing, then you may only get like fifty or sixty percent response from there. And then your margin of, or not percent, actual respondents, sorry. And then your margin of error goes up when you, when you're down to only fifty or sixty respondents. So you go from a margin of error of about five percent to a margin of error of about thirteen percent. So I'm kind of rambling, but I'm on the fence on the survey. I think it would be good to ask our citizens, you know, how are they doing and how they're dealing with this and how they're getting their information and things like that. But if you'd rather, if you'd rather send that twenty thousand dollars somewhere else, that's totally up to you as a council.
Uh, Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, I mean, if we're dealing with, you know, if we had, right now, we're talking about a hundred and three thousand dollars. If we had, you know, millions of dollars that we had to figure out how to allocate a survey, it might make sense in helping us kind of hone and figure out where the most meaningful ways to spend that money are. But I'm guessing a survey like this is still costing, what, low five figures probably? Ten, fifteen thousand dollars probably?
Twenty thousand.
Okay, twenty thousand dollars. So you're I just don't think we're getting a return on investment from that. I'm not sure what the purpose of it is. And I would rather put that into direct help like rental assistance than than doing a survey unless there's a real concrete thing we're hoping to get out of it. I don't get the sense there is, so.
No, I mean, it'd be valuable information, but it's really up to you guys on how you want to spend it, so.
Anyone else? Councilmember Curtis.
Think Councilmember Shrubnek was well before me.
Councilmember Shrubnek, I saw your hand go up, but.
Sure, um, yeah, a similar con, uh, comment to Councilmember Herbig in that I'm I'm not sure unless we had resources to do something to to act on the survey results. I'm not sure. It kind of feels like we're setting up people to have an expectation if we're surveying them about their needs. And we don't have resources to address those needs necessarily. However, we do have resources to address needs that have already been articulated from our businesses, so. And that is, I mean, that's, that's a, that's a known gap. We have more businesses that applied for specific funding than received it. So I would, there's our cat. I would, um, I mean, it, for me, it'd be either that or the the rental assistance. I mean, there is a fair amount of support right now from a variety of mechanisms on rental assistance. So I'm kind of leaning toward business, but yeah, not the survey.
Um, Councilmember Curtis.
So if if I understand this program right, the goal is to spend all the money that we could legitimately get reimbursed for, right? So we have about a hundred thousand dollars we want to spend. I'd be inclined to go about two-thirds through human sources agencies for personal family help and one-third for business.
Assistant City Manager, Ms. Ausley, you had something?
Uh, yes, good evening. And Debbie was, was correct in pointing out that the the successful King County businesses who are, will be receiving some of the money from the Working Washington Fund that the Governor's Office has has created. That was, that was announced today. There were twenty-five applicants from from Kenmore for for those funds. And the successful applicants who who got those awards today. And and actually, most of the applicants from Kenmore applied for the maximum possible, which was ten thousand dollars. The the two who got the awards were awarded five thousand dollars. So I think one way to to kind of streamline a process would would be to provide some funding for those twenty-three businesses that that were not successful in this. And they were all in the same kind of boat in terms of not being able to operate or or really having to cut back on their operations in in the early couple of months of the of the pandemic. So you know me, I'm always going to be advocating for for some business assistance. We will, however, also have some money from from King County for business assistance around, I believe, thirty-five thousand dollars. So we could, you know, make that money go a little further. So those are my comments of and and we'd be happy to come back and and talk about, you know, further criteria for allocating any of that money to those businesses who already took the time to apply to the Working Washington.
Uh, yes, Councilmember O'Kane.
When I, excuse me, I lean more towards, I lean towards supporting businesses and rental assistance more than, and I I do see a need for human services, but I think I'm hoping that maybe if we were able to prevent people from having to seek housing or other assistance. Rather, you know, if we can help keep them in their homes, I think that would be really great. I also think our businesses have been hit. We just, we we can't even see what it is. So we've got new businesses and things that we definitely, I I support what Ms. Ausley just presented that. Anyway, I lean towards rental assistance and small business and business assistance with with the funds that we have available. With human services, if we have, I just don't know if it'd be substantial.
I guess I'm confused. I saw rental assistance as part of human services. So we would give the money to a human services agency.
Yes.
We don't want to be in that business of passing out the money.
Thank you, yes, that's, that that makes sense. So I I didn't, I didn't hear it that way. I was thinking it was more like Mary's Place or just some specific or emergency services, but towards someone who can manage those funds to support people as well. I would, that, thank you. We're, we're together on that.
So if we did sort of the two-thirds, one-third, we'd end up about seventy thousand for the rental assistance. We'd end up thirty thousand out of this one hundred. And then the next thirty thousand coming. So we'd end up with about sixty thousand for business help and seventy thousand for rental assistance.
Remember to throw in that twenty thou for not doing the survey.
There we go.
May I put that towards, I'm sorry for interrupting, but that might be good money to put towards business as well. I'm I'm a little concerned there, honestly.
I mean, just doing some quick math, that could get us to a little over four thousand per, for each of the businesses. Just doing some back-of-the-envelope math.
File.
Could I, could I also just mention a couple of things about some of the supplies for the businesses who are reopening that that would not be, you know, just for those, you know, twenty-three businesses we talked about. And that could be stuff like hand sanitizer or, you know, a gift card to a a local printer to to print up signs and 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 other things and masks, of course. And so I've been talking with some other cities who are offering that just on a, you know, if a business needs this, you know, there, there are supplies available.
And it wouldn't be a preset packet that we would give. It would be more kind of like a buffet style where they could come and get what they need.
Right. I think that's been working pretty well in some of our neighboring cities.
Okay, so Councilmember File is patiently waiting here, and then we'll go to Councilmember Shrubnek.
So I, you know, right before Nancy Ausley spoke, she addressed the issue I wanted to bring up, which is the issue of COVID compliance and that, you know, PPE and sanitizer and all that. The masks and signage is very costly, let alone, you know, plastic barriers. And those are, that's a supportive arm. We can help our our local small businesses as they reopen. Now, I know that there are barriers to gift cards, so we can't gift. So we'll we'll have to work with maybe a business that supplies that printing or whatever. We have to figure that out. But so I I do support dealing with our public health issue. Rental assistance. We also know there is issues surrounding moving and the lack of available resources for people who are are not able to stay in their, their home or their rental unit any longer. And that's something that's come past, I believe, Mayor Baker and myself recently. So funds are limited without, within the community on that as well. And we don't want to see people out on the street and are stuck without means to be able to move if there are in that in that unfortunate scenario. So I would support that as an an option as well.
Yeah, but don't forget homeowners in this too. Because there are homeowners that could stand a little bit of help and not lose their homes. So you can't forget that one. Anybody else? Oh, yes, Councilmember Shrubnek.
And and then I think Councilmember Herbig after me. I I can go either with the two-thirds, one-third, or even fifty-fifty. I do have one question for Nancy, and that is you know, you guys put forward eleven out of the twenty-three. What was the what were the, you know, criteria there? Because I guess I'm a little hesitant to spread the peanut butter so thin that it becomes meaningless. I definitely prefer giving them an outright grant than getting into the minutia of gift cards and spending staff time figuring out all of this stuff. I mean, they know what they need. They put it in their application. We give them the money. I mean, I, I mean, to me, that just, that is much more straightforward. But I would be curious, the eleven versus the twenty-three?
Well, um, there was priority both at the, at the state level and and we looked at as well, were there women-owned, minority-owned businesses among those who who applied? And I think that was, that was one of the the main ones.
Okay.
And so.
Yeah, I mean, I I guess I'd lean toward giving a little bit more to the eleven. But I I could be convinced either way. I, it seems like, you know, there's interest in both the business side and the rental assistance.
And and my suggestion for your consideration too is when it comes to those supplies for reopening supplies, I think it would be great to just make that available to whomever needs it. And not limit it to, to the people who, or the businesses who were among those who applied for that grant. So it would, you know, it would be, you can have a gallon of sanitizer or or, you know, a couple of boxes of masks or, you know, other, other supplies that you need. But but the actual, you know, monetary grant I I think is, makes it makes sense to go to those businesses who who applied that was very, very competitive, particularly in King County. And and each, each and every business had, you know, employees and and, you know, they weren't able to to operate. So in in many cases, so you're very ruby of our support.
Deputy Mayor.
So when it comes to this idea of giving reopening supplies to businesses, is this something that we've heard a need for our business community about, or is this something that we're just guessing they might need? Because I don't know, it just this seems kind of, I don't know, for some reason, this thing just kind of catches me's a little left field. Is this something that our business communities reached out and said, we need help with masks and sanitizer and other things?
I, I, I think our own experience at the city has has shown that it it's difficult to get your hands on some of these supplies. At at one time, if you, if you ask. If you, if you ask Jennifer Gordon, it's gloves now that are hard to get, where, you know, six weeks ago, it was maybe masks that were really hard to get. So it really does ebb and flow, and it, and it can be costly.
Okay.
All right, so Debbie wants to comment from us, right?
I have another comment.
Yes, go ahead.
So if we think about this as one pile of funds instead of three piles, so we have the 103,000, we got the 20,000 by not doing the survey, and then we got the potential 30,000 coming, so that's about 150,000. And my thought is, on the 25 businesses that applied, they've actually gone through an application, they've listed what they think their needs are, so we're not making up pretend needs that we think they'll need. It's already documented, so we don't have to really think to give them some money. So if we gave them like 3,000 each for the 23 people, that's 69,000, so that's about 70,000. So that's about half of the 150,000 total pie. So it would amount to about half for rent assistance and half for businesses.
All right, we need to, we need to wrap this up at some point. Councilmember O'Kane.
I was, I was pretty close. I, I, I support Councilmember Curtis's proposition there. I also, a little part of me says, maybe we should put this whole lot in one place and have the most bang for our buck. You know, and we're looking at $100,000. These businesses have been hit, maybe we can give them more substantial allotments than $3,000, because I don't know how far $3,000 goes for a lot of businesses. It's just a part of my thinking there, but I could go either way, depending on what council's position is. I did want to draw attention to that we could probably create a bigger benefit if we do put it in one category.
Ms. Matt, what do you need from us tonight?
I just need direction on, even if it's a percentage, on how you would allocate that 103,000. So I think Councilmember Curtis has provided a suggestion, so I think I've heard council members agree that some of the money should go to business. The question then is whether all the money should go to business or whether some of it should also go for rental assistance or to human resources, and I haven't heard a consensus.
I've heard a number of people wanting rental assistance, but let's just go through this. Are we in agreement? We are in agreement on the business part. I've heard, nobody say they're against that. Rental assistance.
Yes.
Is everybody in favor or you want something different?
Favor.
All right, I'm seeing a bunch of thumbs up. So I think you have direction on that.
I would like to add for that rental assistance piece, that organization that the funding goes allocated to, that we ensure that it's for Kenmore residents and that that is there.
Mayor, I just wanted to make one note on the human services front. We, we haven't spent that whole $70,000. We've spent 20,000.
Right.
There's still 50,000 sitting there that has not been allocated to anybody. Okay, I, I thought you knew, I just wanted to make sure that was known.
Well, this is the additional money that we're talking.
Yeah.
Okay.
Councilmember Shrubnik.
Miss, Councilmember Shrubnik.
I'm not sure that Debbie Bent actually has enough direction there.
I failed in her need.
Yeah, I am supportive of Councilmember Curtis's 50-50. I'd make a friendly amendment if folks are interested in that. I, and because I also agree with Councilmember O'Kane. And maybe that, that 50% that goes to businesses could just be for the, the 11 that, you know, kind of made the cut, so to speak. That's an idea, because that, that gives it to that kind of underrepresented.
Yeah, but I'd really like to see Ms. Owlsley, whose work closely with this, at least have a little bit of discretion, but.
Well, that, that was their selection, was the 11.
Yeah, we could have, but we could have really recommended many more than.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
It's going on 11 now. We really need to get this moving.
Speaking of 11.
This is substantial, actually, and this is a really important decision and from my perspective.
Deputy Mayor was first. Deputy, please.
I would just, my only concern with only getting, splitting the money to those 11 is that those folks could end up getting more money than the two that actually already got funded.
Exactly, yeah.
But I'm fine with the 50-50 split between the two and not doing the survey and calling it a day.
Councilmember O'Kane.
Well, I just, there was something that came to mind with what Ms. Chellin brought up, which is that we already did have that 50,000 for human services that we haven't allocated yet. I feel, I'm just going to present that I think that the business community may be a higher need than the 50% that we're putting forward at this time. But I will go with the 50-50 if that's what council wants to move forward with, but I would almost go back to the original. I think someone had mentioned two-thirds business, one-third rental assistance, or was it the other way around? I can't recall, but no. Anyway, I have a sense we're sticking with the 50-50, but I have a sense that our business community might be in more need.
All right. So where are we at with this? I'm hearing a lot of people with 50-50.
Is there a reason that we haven't allocated the human service dollars?
We, we just, I mean, I'm in touch with the organizations and want them to let me know their needs, and I just haven't had any requests. A lot of them say, you know, we're going to need more, we're going to need more, we just don't know how much yet. So like I said, we've, we've given 20, and then, you know, Deputy Mayor Herbig had that motion to add the extra 50. So they know it's there, they're just, I think they're just trying to figure out what their needs are. I anticipate we'll spend it, I just don't know who yet.
Anything else?
Mayor, could you please confirm what the split is, please?
Yeah, so I'm hearing 50-50 from a number of people. Is 50-50 work or do we want to go with something different?
I will say though, the 50-50 was the 100 plus the 20 plus the 30.
Right.
Whereas I think Debbie Bent's asking, what do I need to do with the 103,000?
Right, that's what she's asking.
Yeah, so, so then it would be about a 70-30 split to make the whole thing work out a 50-50 split. Does that make sense? If I did my math approximately right. You can't take 50-50 of the 100 and make it work out with the 50-50 for the 150.
I agree. Thank you.
Approximately right.
This is a math problem.
Add a quarter to 11.
I think I see a motion in your future, Councilmember Curtis.
Okay, how about if I just, shall I try a motion?
You can try.
So, so right now, the only question is the 103,000, or do we also need to discuss the, the survey?
What's on the agenda is the 103.
Okay, we'll stay focused. So of the 103,000, I would recommend giving two-thirds of that to human services, rent subsidy, whatever, you know, that category of things, and one-third would go to businesses. And then, so that's the motion. Realizing the 20,000 that we're going to save and the 30,000 still to come, then would all go to business.
Okay, is that, is that part of your motion?
No, 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 no. We're going to stay on the 103,000 is, we're going to stay real focused for the motion. I'm just explaining why I, you know, without figuring out to the dollar, I'm pretty close.
Before we go any further, can we get a second? I'm sorry, Mayor, I'm not trying to do your job.
Again.
Thank you.
All right, Deputy Mayor.
All right, quick question for Ms. Bent. The 30,000 CBG, CBDG money, that's the funds we can actually use for rental assistance, is that correct?
The CBG funds, we can use for rental assistance, but that is money that Kenmore residents would have to apply directly to the nonprofit assigned by King County.
I guess what I'm trying to ask is, could those funds be used in the way that Councilmember Curtis's motion is positing that they could be used for business assistance?
That's a separate pot of money.
I thought Nancy said that pot of money could be used for business.
Okay, let's not be talking over everybody here. Ms. Matt.
Yes, yes, ma'am, thank you. So my understanding from Councilmember Curtis is that of the 103, two-thirds of that he wants to go to rental assistance, whatever that dollar amount is doing the math, and the third to business. That's his motion, and then there are separate kind of categories, and in addition to that, which he would then recommend going to business.
Yeah, and I, I think we've got a motion on the floor, we need to talk to the motion.
We do.
In order to talk to the motion, I think we need to understand how the other 20 and the other 30 can be spent.
Councilmember Curtis.
So I guess a question for Nancy. Did you say that that, that extra $30,000 could be used for business?
Let's, let's ascertain which 30,000 we're talking about, because I understand that we're, we're set to get a little over 30,000 from King County.
Right.
For business assistance.
That's the 30,000 I'm talking about.
Yeah.
So that can, that can be used for business.
Correct.
Okay.
And the 20, the 20,000 that we're not going to do the survey, that can also be used for business?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Anybody else? Well, there's a motion on the table to allocate this 103,000 that we're talking about, 70% to rental assistance and 30% to business. Is that correct?
Technically, I said two-thirds, one-third, but it doesn't.
All right, so of the 103, two-thirds go to rental assistance, one-third goes to business.
Yes.
Everybody good with that? Any more comments or questions? Mr. City Manager, is your hand raised?
No.
All right. Any more, any more questions or comments?
Yeah, Mayor, can I suggest taking care of this motion and then have a separate motion to take care of the $20,000?
Oh, yeah, we're taking care of the 103.
This is just on the 103, okay.
All right. So, if the clerk, please take the vote.
Councilmember Curtis.
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall.
Yes.
Councilmember Shrubnik.
Yes.
Councilmember File.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Kane.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Herbig.
Yes.
Mayor Baker.
Yes, with reservations that businesses do get their share. All right.
Yes.
You're all.
Okay.
All right, now, what, we have $20,000 to deal with?
Correct.
All right, then, sounds almost like this is all going to business, but anybody, I see Councilmember Curtis nodding and said emphatically, yes, this goes to business.
I'll let somebody else make a motion this time.
No, go ahead, you're on a roll, make the motion.
I make a motion, we don't do the survey and we use the 20,000 for business support.
No second.
Councilmember O'Kane, you had something.
I just had a quick question. I'm sure we'll be able to allocate all of our funds to social services, but if there is lower demand, would it be able to come to the table again to reallocate back towards business if that is a higher need? It's just a question.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, I just wanted to confirm that.
All right, any other questions?
Again, the motion on the table is to not do the survey for $20,000 and reallocate that money to business.
That's correct.
Yeah.
All right, any further comments, any further questions? Clerk, please take the roll.
Deputy Mayor Herbig.
Yes.
Mayor Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Kane.
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall.
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis.
Yes.
Councilmember File.
Yes.
Councilmember Shrubnik.
Yes.
Passed.
All right, anything else we need to take care of on this?
No.
Good. I'm glad you've gotten your answers.
Thank you.
We could stretch this 10 more minutes, we're at 11. All right. Mr. Carlinsey, do you have anything more?
No.
Okay, fine. Comments, reports, initiatives, Councilmember O'Kane.
Nothing this evening, just, thank you.
Councilmember Marshall.
Stay safe, stay united, we can do it.
There you go. Councilmember Curtis.
Question for the city manager. Now that there's people in the city hall several hours every day, is there any way we can extend the number of hours people can get masks? So when I was passing out the food, the curbside meals, I think I had seven people, groups, not have any masks, so I went over to the city hall and got some. So, and I didn't realize it was only two hours, two days a week. So if there's some way to make those masks more available, I'd be happy.
Right, we're actually having the opposite problem where nobody's coming to get the masks now, and we're gonna, we're actually thinking about pulling back the hours that they're about.
They just need to give away free food, that's how you find the people without masks.
Free food brings everybody in.
There we go.
Yeah. And boy, when it rains, it pours, we're, we're, we're going to be getting thousands of masks now, and these are like from the county and other entities, they're just giving us masks. So we have a lot to give out.
Well.
Yeah, Councilmember Shrubnik.
Well, yeah, sorry, I, I don't have other council comments, but I had a reaction to the, we're getting thousands of masks. I mean, I wonder if the masks could go where the people without them are, which is going to these places that are now opening. And, yeah, I mean, people are coming in without masks, I mean, I'm seeing them not just in Kenmore, but a lot of places. And there's just a lot of people who are not willing to wear them, but at least we'd have them available, so.
I'm working with Stephanie Bond also to have several of us go into our low-income neighborhoods and just handle, hand out boxes of them too, so we're going to be doing that in the near future.
How about pass them out at Safeway?
Yeah.
I still see some people in there without masks.
There's lots of them.
Yeah.
All right, Councilmember Shrubnik, you said you didn't have anything?
Correct, I second the Safeway idea.
Yeah, but we can't be supplying masks for private business, but.
We'll figure it out.
They could request a bunch and we can give them to them.
Councilmember File.
Thank you, Mayor Baker. I just want to reiterate, it was a really wonderful experience to be able to have such a proactive program such as curbside meals, serve our community so beautifully over the last week, and I thank Councilmember Deborah Shrubnik for her support in this process, and I appreciate all of you for your support. We served many meals and reached a great number of people who hadn't yet, you know, completed their census, and so it was, it was a proactive program, it was good. And for that, we really have a community member, Stacy Vinsella, who brought that idea forward to me, and we as council members are always happy to hear from our community, but in this case, it was nice to be able to, to know exactly who to reach out to, to make that program happen. And on another note, Mayor Baker, I want to thank you for tapping me to work with you on police policies. We have 30 days from the time when we took the mayor's pledge or our council signed on to that mayor's pledge to do that and then report back to our community. And so that really means we need to have some direction from the council of what you would like us to look at and approved time with the police chief to do this. And I do believe. Um, and I do believe there is a secondary piece here, which is hearing from our community. And whether it's filling out a community form or having a, a listening session, I think it's important that we do have, um, community input in the process. Um, so I'd like to hear some of your thoughts on that. And hopefully. Uh, Rob Carlinsey, uh, City Manager, can approve that, uh, time with the police chief? So we can do that?
Yeah, so I missed the thirty day thing, I didn't know that. Um. So, you know, with our workload, it's all a zero sum game. Add something to our workload, something needs to come off. I thought this was going to be a, a longer discussion that we would be able to have a conversation with you about the work plan and how it fits in. I don't know how to do what you're suggesting in thirty days.
Well. I think that's the part of the point is that. Um, we need to have a good consensus of what our council would like us to look into. Need comments and emails from our community, uh, about some concerns they have. Uh, but it would help frame our conversation with the police chief and which policies and, uh, things we're looking at. If we could have some council input.
Well, I certainly can set up a community Zoom meeting.
Okay.
That's easy to do.
Yeah. That takes care of that part. Um, but we do have that reporting back to the community.
We just need to make sure everybody knows that we contract with the sheriff and the sheriff makes the ultimate decisions on these types of things. So I think.
Right.
Giving feedback back to the sheriff. Our own chief doesn't have the ability to change department wide policies. So that just needs to be clear in whatever process we go through.
Well, absolutely. What we can do as a council is, um, give direction about how we might want to enter into a new contract uh, when a contract is due to be refreshed and renewed. Um, that's about the only place we can work with, um, on. Police policies, which really fall under the King County Charter and the King County Sheriff and the police union. It, it's a, a very tight relationship and we can only give some direction if we have a unified voice on that. But. We're shooting in the dark other than, um. Hearing from our community and having that input. But it'd be good to have some council member input on these issues. Thank you.
So if council could get back to, uh. To Councilmember File during the week with what their concerns are and whatever, to give us some direction here, would be greatly appreciated. Because Councilmember File and myself, we're not going to, we can't do this in the dark. So you got any thoughts? Please, uh, please let us know. Um. All right, so. Uh, Deputy Mayor, do you have anything?
Uh. No, it's late, um, nothing to add. Black Lives Matter, good meeting.
All right, uh, I have one small thing. I got a letter today from, uh, Debbie Terry's person, the Shoreline City Manager. Um, and they're forming a committee. Um, it's a North King County Shelter Task Force. And they're asking Kenmore, Bothell, uh, and Lake Forest Park in Woodenville to recommend a council member to serve on that task force. I know this is a very close issue, a dear issue to Councilmember O'Kane. So I have talked with her and if there are no objections, uh, Councilmember O'Kane can be the Kenmore representative on that, on that committee. So are there any objections to that? Or anybody else want to do it? Let's rephrase that. Anybody else want to do this? Okay, I see no movement. So, uh, Councilmember O'Kane, um, congratulations, you're going to be the City Council Representative on this task force and, uh. I know you're going to do a good job, so thank you.
Well, thank you. I look forward to it.
Okay. If there is no further business to come before us. Uh, we've reached eleven o'clock, this meeting is adjourned.
Good night, guys.
Good night, everybody.
Good night. Bye.
Bye-bye.